Good evening. I'll call the meeting back to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, February 1st, 2022. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for the listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Belvin, would you read our community prayer?
Yes, sir. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve and that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. The first item on our agenda this evening is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none. Our first scheduled item on the agenda this evening is an update on the regulations of dispersment of ARPA funds from Plymouth County Treasurer Tom O'Brien. However, we do have our police chief here, who's here to speak on an article later in our agenda, the special act to remove civil service. And I wonder if the board would be willing to take that item out of order so let our police chief get on with his.
I'll make that motion.
Take it out of order.
Second motion.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, the special act to remove civil service. Mr., I'm sorry, Chief Doofly, do you have anything you'd like to say on this item?
I actually don't. I just wanted to ask you a few questions as we take a vote. So, if there are no questions, I didn't have anything more to say. We did negotiate this with the police union and the select board earlier this year. The next step is to take it to town meeting for a vote and then send it up to the legislature for their approval. But if there are no questions, I don't have much more I can add.
I think this is something we've discussed several times. Anything, Ms. Ewing?
I just wanted to ask a question so the public would know. This was approved by the police union.
Yes, this has been negotiated with the police union first and then through the board with their contract. So, both sides have had a chance to digest it and approve it. And it was approved by the police union as well.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the special act to remove civil service.
I think we have some.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had language.
Special word.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I move we approve the submission of the following article to be placed on the FBI 23 annual town meeting warrant to authorize a select board to petition the general court for special legislation act to remove Carver Police Department from civil service.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Chief, and thank you Treasurer O'Brien for indulging us in that.
Thank you all for considering my time. But I'm here at your disposal if you have any questions or need to know. If you don't mind, I'll wait.
We always appreciate your.
Thank you.
You're willing to accommodate us, Chief. All right. Mr. O'Brien, thank you for taking some time out of your schedule to join us, and thank you for accommodating our chief this evening.
My pleasure.
I think we've all been anxiously awaiting a meeting to update some of the ARPA rules. And I know they've been changing and sort of continue to change, right?
They do. They do. So, the floor is mine?
The floor is yours.
Thank you so much. And thank you, the board, for inviting me.
Mr. O'Brien, if you could speak right into the microphone.
Right into the microphone. How about I move the microphone?
That way, if the heat comes on, we'll still be able to hear you.
Great. Fair enough. How is that? Is that better?
Very good.
No, not yet. We'll get there eventually. I just need to keep my notes in front of me. How's that? Is that better?
I think so.
Yes? Okay. Thumbs up. Excellent. I'm here representing the county. Of course, that includes our county commissioners, Chairwoman Sandra White, Commissioner Hanley and Commissioner Valenzuela as well. Let me, before we get into ARPA, and I know that's going to be the major focus, I just want to give a quick update on our first foray into federal programs over the last couple of years, the CARES Act. I am bringing with me today a check to the town of Carver for $49,710.77. Looking forward to a photo op, the obligatory photo opportunity with all of you as we present this check. We had a few nicer ones out in the gazebo earlier in warmer weather. But I did want you to know that this is the 11th check that the town of Carver is receiving pursuant to the Plymouth County CARES program. And this will bring the total that Carver has received from the program to $1,260,551.62. Money that we know was desperately needed during the pandemic, money that we know the town of Carver put to good use, money that the Board of Selectmen worked very hard with all of your department heads, your public safety officials, and many others. I know there were times when communities were wondering how much money would come out and how the program would run, but it has been a huge success, and Carver is certainly emblematic of that success, and you should be very pleased. I will let you also know that you still have four submissions pending with us. Those four submissions were submitted to the end of November and December, right up to the deadline of December 31st, 2021. I will let you know, too, that the state, which was running the program everywhere outside of Plymouth County, shut the deadline off on October 29th. But the law gave everyone until December 31st, so we gave everyone until December 31st. Carver capitalized on that, and your four submissions total more than $500,000. We're reviewing those as we have all of the past ones. That submission puts you over your second total allocation by a little more than $70,000. So, Carver has certainly benefited from the program. Carver is one of those communities that received two and a half to three times more than communities outside of Plymouth County who weren't part of our program and really emblematic of the relationship that we're pleased that we have with the towns in Plymouth County and the success of the program. One of the last components of the program happened toward the end of December when the state decided that they would provide rapid test kits to certain communities in the Commonwealth. And they used a rubric that we still aren't sure how they derived as to which communities would get what tests. But the communities in Plymouth County reached out and said, hey, our community didn't happen to get any tests. Can the county harbor its resources, utilize the CARES program, and perhaps provide some tests? And as you folks know, the county got into the queue. We purchased more than 360,000 tests and disseminated them to our communities last week. I have an example of the iHealth test here that we purchased and provided out to our communities. Carver received 8,280 tests in the form of 4,140 kits, because there are two tests in each kit, which was 46 cartons of tests that were delivered or picked up appropriately last Thursday. And I wanted to thank Jim Carrera for coming and picking those up and bringing them back here to the town of Carver. The other compliment we've heard as we disseminated these kits is how much the communities appreciated that we didn't put any rules, regulations, or restrictions on what they did with them. We know that you folks are best able to decide how to disseminate these types of resources, and so just gave them to our towns and said, you decide whether you send them to the schools or to your senior centers or to the general public. And so, our towns have very much appreciated that. The CARES program will wind its way out over the next couple of months, but all in all, has been just a real support for our communities, and Carver, I think, is a prime example of that. So, compliments to the entire team. It has been a pleasure working with everyone here in the town of Carver, and I hope they feel the same, that they know they can call my office and the county commissioner's office anytime.
And if I could just add to that, I think I certainly thank you to your office and the county commissioners, but I just think we need to acknowledge the hard work of our two interim town administrators and Ms. Weston and all our department heads and how hard they worked to put these submissions together. Because, as you mentioned, I think we maximized our CARES money, and it's good for everybody. But it was a lot of work on behalf of the department heads, and I just want to acknowledge them as well.
And that's entirely appropriate, and I tried to, too. It's a lot of work that the accounting team needs to do, the treasurer's office and the administrator's office. And so, they really did yeoman's work to make sure Carver got that money. And 1.26 million is a valuable resource to communities like Carver. That being said, we now segue into ARPA, and you'll recall that ARPA was passed in May of 2021. The advantage of ARPA over CARES is that it is a three-year program. You'll recall CARES was originally only expected to be a nine- or 10-month program. They did extend it one more year, thankfully. But under ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, I think Congress and the President understood the value of, let's have time to disseminate these resources because communities will need them for a period of time. And so, that's one unique difference. The other unique difference is that the categories of expenditure are a little broader based, and so they released some of the funds fairly shortly after the law was passed. And they released what they called an interim final rule, which I found interesting. In fact, I tease as I go out that I'm filing my taxes this year as my interim final taxes because I may want to change them. And it was very frustrating to those of us that had to administer the ARPA program because we knew that this was just their first foray into providing us rules and guidelines and that they were going to add more to them and change them later on. We were originally supposed to get the final rule in September, then they extended it to October, then November, December, and I'll, a little bit later, tell you exactly when we got the final rule. But it was very clear to Plymouth County, two things. One, communities were receiving their own monies. And so, the town of Carver is slated to receive $1,231,635 directly from the U.S. Treasury. They identify towns of your size as a non-entitlement unit. I'm not sure why they chose that title. I don't like it. But you are an NEU, and that is the money you'll receive directly. I believe and hope that you've received half of that so far in direct aid from the U.S. Treasury. Plymouth County is receiving a little more than $100 million directly to the county. And as with CARES, it is our intention to deliver as much of that to our individual communities as we can, and so we'll be disseminating that. And like the individual towns, we received 50% of that money in July. We're expecting the other 50% later in this calendar year. What's interesting, too, is the rules that they provided originally in the interim rule apply to both pots of money equally. So, the rules that you have to follow with your NEU money are the same rules we follow with the monies that we've received directly from the U.S. Treasury. And what the county did, which I think and hope was helpful to towns like Carver, is we immediately used some of our resources to develop a team similar to what we did under CARES and retain the services of an accounting firm, an auditing firm, and a law firm to create a rubric that we'd make available to our communities. And I encourage anyone who's watching and listening and wants to know more to go to our website, www.plymouthcountyarpa.com. You'll notice it's very similar to www.plymouthcountycare.com. We're not very creative at the county. We're very functional, and we want people to be able to find what they're looking for. We were one of the first levels of government in the country to put up a website analyzing the rule that had been put out and making that available to the general public. Our website went live September 30th, and it has a breakdown of the eligible categories of expenses under ARPA. If you think about it this way, and it's important to do that, there are six general categories that you can spend ARPA money on. And they are, the easiest, infrastructure, and the infrastructure is broken into two categories. One, water and sewer. The second category is broadband. So, there's two categories, water and sewer and broadband. And they had some rules that they defined in the interim rule as to what those were. And they were somewhat narrow, although I think largely what we would think of for water, sewer, and broadband. The other categories were a little bit more complicated. One was in response to public health. So, I think basically anything that CARES would have covered, ARPA will cover. We consider it a CARES plus, if you will. Another was for economic development in response to the pandemic. And in fact, the law says in proportionate response to the pandemic. Interesting use of the English language there, and we'll have to talk about that in a little bit. The other two categories were revenue replacement, and that was fraught with complications under the initial interim rule. Remains a little bit complicated. We can talk about that. And then the last category was for hazard duty pay or premium pay. And again, that had its own rules and regulations, many of which were complicated, and we can delve into that further if you want. I just want to give you an overview so that we can answer questions about individual categories. So, we used our website to define those categories. We have an application sample that you can see as you apply through our program to any of those six categories. The advantage of that, we hoped, was that a town using its own NEU money could use our application, our forms, our data, our information to help them process their own monies. Please understand that this is federal money, and as I say wherever I go, as you spend these monies, you have to think that if there are any questions about these expenditures, it's not going to be your local DOR agent that's knocking on your door. It's going to be the fine folks in blue windbreakers that say FBI on the back. And so, we really always want to be very careful about these expenditures. I will say that that was one of the successes of the CARES program. By putting together the team that we did, we did all the audit work for you to make sure that any of those issues were resolved on the front end. And we feel very confident that every dollar that we gave out to you through CARES was vetted fully, met all the rules and regulations. We had three levels of review, and we feel very confident. In fact, you may be reading in the paper about monies being clawed back, not just in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but around the country, from communities and governmental entities that didn't spend the CARES money pursuant to the rules of the CARES Act. Some of that, in fact, probably most of it, was unintentional because it was a very complicated piece of legislation, but you really have to follow the rules. And I wasn't surprised to see some communities try as they might not follow the rules, and now the federal government is looking for money back. Under the Plymouth County CARES program, that's not going to happen because we had that level of review. Just to assuage your concerns, we set up that level of review under ARPA. Our first level of review, any application the town submits to the county for their portion of our monies, goes to Clifton Larson Allen, a very reputable national accounting firm. They're going to review it on the front end to make sure it meets all the rules and regulations, not just of the federal statute, but of the state statutes as well. It then goes to a second level review done by Powers &amp; Sullivan, another fairly well-known accounting firm here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And then the third level of review is my office before it gets presented to the commissioners for their vote and authorization. So, again, we feel that at least with our resources, we've set up a very robust review process to make sure that every rule, every regulation, even as it changes, follows. And then, of course, we've hired Mintz Levin, a very big law firm, to review our setup and our program, our agreement, and the like. So, we feel that we have you covered on our end. I would just caution towns with your NEU money, please be careful because the same rules apply. You know, I kind of wish, in fact, some of our communities came and said, could you take our NEU money and manage it for us? And I wish I could. In fact, the law prohibits us from doing that. But it's no less stringent, and so as you're thinking of expending those resources, be very careful. Use our templates if you can and follow those six categories. I highlighted the six categories because that's what came out. They remain the same, but the rules changed with the final rule, which was released on January 6th. So, the final rule really just came out a few weeks ago. It's 437 pages long. So, if you do suffer from insomnia, grab yourself a copy. I've read it twice now. It usually takes me six readings to become a master of any piece of legislation from the federal government, so I have a few more to go. Their summary, which is available online at the Office of U.S. Treasury, I brought my copy, which is marked up, so I can't give it out, only because it's got my notes and bits of information. Their summary of their law is 44 pages long. So, it is a little bit shorter, but still a little bit complex and takes a few readings. I have this one almost mastered. And fortunately, NACO, the National Association of County Organization, also gave us a little bit of a cheat sheet about the rules change. That cheat sheet is fortunately only 36 pages long, summarizing the ARPA rule. Let me just say this. What the final rule did was try to broaden the scope of each of those categories because they heard from Plymouth County, other governmental entities, that the first rule was too narrow. So, under broadband, they felt that the way that they were defining it was too narrow. So, they've expanded their definition of broadband to include things like hotspots and the like. So, those are now eligible. Under water and sewer, there was some concern that it wasn't clear that it could address concerns with community water resources. They've expanded that rule to include water community resources, and so that's now going to be eligible. Under the revenue replacement, they have given each recipient an option now of using a lump sum number or following the calculation that they provided last June in the interim final rule, and have changed that formula to make it a little bit easier to use more money under revenue replacement. And we'll talk about that in a second. Same with hazard duty pay. They've broadened the categories. They still are focused on those that make less money. They still want that to be a frontline use of the resource, but they've allowed lump sum payments, which weren't really allowed under the original rule and a few other flexible options that didn't exist. Same with economic development, same with public health. We are updating our website to include the information from the final rule. Our law firm has reviewed it, our accounting firm. It will be updated by Thursday. So, if you want a quick summary of those six categories, I would suggest our website is probably one of the best, not just in Massachusetts, but in the country. In fact, I got a call from Oklahoma just yesterday asking where we got all the information for our website, and we said, well, we got it out of the rule. So, it's a pretty valuable resource that's there for you at your disposal. I know there are lots of questions about each of those categories. If we can, focus on revenue replacement because I think that's where we get a lot of questions. As I said, they had a calculation that each community was required to do under revenue replacement to see if they were eligible to use those resources. The calculation was somewhat complex. In fact, I thought it was not quite right. We submitted some information into the U.S. Treasury to try and get them to correct it. They fixed some of it, not quite all of it, but they also kind of threw up their hands and said, well, you can use up to $10 million and not have to use the calculation. So, that's good news from an NEU perspective because Carver is now eligible, if you would like, to use all of the NEU money that you received as revenue replacement money if you opt to do that and not do the calculation, which if you're going to do NEU money, I would suggest you do. However, I will also caution, and I caution all of our communities, that revenue replacement, while attractive as a one-time mechanism to get at the funds, it is intended to last over three years, the one-time revenues. And what I'm worried about is many communities, not in Plymouth County but outside, are using them as operating revenues. And you absolutely do not want to do that because the program ends. If you had a one-time expense, that's a good thing that you might need to cover and use these resources you could. I am suggesting to all of our communities in Plymouth County that you focus on infrastructure for many reasons. I think infrastructure is something that's been neglected. I think it's a burden on our communities that we're even having to borrow or go out to our communities and see if they'll support at different levels. And a lot of those projects get lost or put to the wayside for much more important things that leap to the forefront, whether in front of you as the board or in front of town meeting. And I really believe, particularly with some of the state rules and regulations, there's a demand for water, sewer, infrastructure. I can report that a number of our communities, at least five that I know of, are going to use all of their NEU money and all of their county ARPA money on water, sewer projects. A few of those are coastal, but not all of them. I've heard from a number of our communities about PFAS and the obligations they have to take care of some of their drinking water and well water, and these resources are now eligible to be used for that. So, while the other categories are expanded and that they get a lot of attention, I believe infrastructure is the direction that will provide the most bang for your buck. I really feel as though it's a chance to take care of some projects that have been outstanding or that are now emergency projects. It makes the reporting a little bit easier because you're reporting on one project to two or just three. If you do use the money for revenue replacement or hazard duty pay or for public health or for economic development, you have to report every quarter what you've done with that money, even once it's spent, for three years. And so, just think of that burden on your team as you're thinking of spending these monies. If you take X number of dollars and use revenue to replace it and spend, let's just say for sake of argument, $100,000 in the budget, you have to explain what you used it for in full detail, and you have to do that every quarter until the program ends. Now, the same is obviously true of infrastructure, but if it's one project that meets all the rules and regulations, that makes that reporting a lot easier. The other challenge with the NEU money, if you do something other than infrastructure, is you can't deviate from what you've said you're going to do with the money. And I've already seen towns that were in a rush to use this money, say that we're going to use it in one way, and then, for whatever reason, often legitimate, not use it in that direction. And then they're stuck because they've reported to the U.S. Treasury they're going to use the money this way. And let me tell you, the reporting to tell them you're going to do something different is three times more complicated. So, you really want to try to avoid that. The good news is we have time. So, as I said to all of our communities, in Carver, you're in a perfect spot to have this conversation and begin to have these discussions as a board and with your department heads and with your community. What are the priorities? Think it through before you submit an application, before you use your own money. Make sure you've really got the top 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, or 1, 2, 3, or 1, 2 before you begin to process through this. We have time. In fact, I will report that we rolled out our program on our website on September 30th. We only have five applications, four of them from one town, and those are for infrastructure projects. So, towns are taking our advice. They're thinking this through. They're being very prudent in recognizing these are valuable resources. We need to spend them thoughtfully and pursuant to the rules and regulations. I will tell you, too, I'm more than happy to come back. There are going to be, we had a conversation this morning, I had a 10 o'clock Zoom with our audit team. They assure me there will be more changes to the rule as we go through. That's the one thing we can be sure of, that's going to change again. They update through frequently asked questions. And so, you know, please invite me back in in April, May, or June if you'd like. I can give you whatever update we have at the time. The rules will probably have changed. The message here, though, is be thoughtful, be contemplative, really think big picture, and try and maximize the use of these resources because they're here only for the length of the program. But I think that what the federal government is doing is necessary. I think our communities need these resources, and we're here to help. Don't hesitate to pick up the phone and call my office. I get easily 30 calls a day about ARPA, so I enjoy it. It makes me a better person to administer this program on behalf of the county because sometimes people ask questions I hadn't even thought of, and I have to go and get the answers. And we have a team. I pick up the phone and call my accountant, my auditors, and my lawyers and say, how do we interpret this to make sure people don't make a mistake? I do feel confident through the county program, we'll give you the best guidance that we can and that once we give a check out, just as we did with the CARES checks, you don't have to worry about it because it'll have been vetted fully. I do worry about the individual community money because towns have limited resources. You can only ask your legal team so much. You can only ask your auditing team so much. You can only ask your accounting team. So, if we can help answer a question for you, let us do that. I will also let you know that Clifton Larson Allen has said to our communities, because we were the first adopter, we actually created the program, that they are there as a resource for you as well. So, if you have questions, let me know. I'll give you the contact person there, and you can ask them directly, whether it's about your NEU money or any questions you have about our program. So, we're really trying to be a value add to the towns in Plymouth County. I could go into more detail, but I want to make sure there's time for questions about the program and make sure that I address any concerns that you folks may have. But we're excited about this. We look forward to administering our portion for you. I will let you know that the county has released. let you know that the county has released 25% of the total amount. So, phase one allocation of the town of Carver is $554,258.44. That is up on our website under municipal allocation. Other phases will be released as is necessary and as we get more money from the U.S. Treasury, and we'll keep you posted. But I really appreciate you inviting me in and happy to answer any questions.
We, we appreciate you taking the time to come in and update us. And if I could just ask you a, a couple of quick questions. The first thing that makes me a little bit nervous about the whole ARPA program is when you talk about, you know, the interim rules and the second interim rule and the final interim rule. And do you think we're somewhat confident now that we have the final rules about how to spend and what's eligible and what's not eligible? Or do you think those rules are going to continue to, to change?
I think they will continue to change, but I think we're at a point where we can begin to make decisions. I think they'll change more around the fringes than they did. The final rule is fairly robust. So, I think the changes will just be in response to individual questions. So, I think we're at a point where we can really move forward.
All right. Questions from the board? Mr. Belvin?
For our initial amount, that's 1.231 million. All right. That's when you're talking about, we got to make that last for three years, correct?
So, the program is a three-year program. Some communities, I think, are making a mistake and trying to spend it all in year one. You can do that. You don't have to spread it out over three years. I think it's prudent to spread it out, but that's a choice every community gets to make on their own.
Okay. And then, the county's getting 100,000, 100 million?
Yes.
To spend on all the people within our county?
So, the county is getting that money, and we could quite candidly spend it however we saw fit. But the commissioners are very cognizant that we're here to serve our communities and are going to be releasing the vast majority of that money back out to our communities in different phases.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Che.
Mr. O'Brien.
Mr. O'Brien, my question is, what category does affordable housing fall under? Because I, I know it's, it's in there somewhere.
It is. So, that would be under economic development in response to the pandemic. As we've seen, there are certainly a number of housing crisis issues, and that would be the category it falls under. I was on a Zoom call with some of the state senators about that. I hope there's a regional effort to address some of the housing concerns because I think that's a good use of these resources. But that's the category it would fall under.
And that would require the quarterly reporting?
Yes. All the, all the categories will require the quarterly reporting. I'm just suggesting that it's easier to report on big projects than on a number of small projects.
Okay. So, if we had one, a big affordable housing project, that would be?
It would fall under economic development and it, it would, depending on the project, and we'd have to, it would likely be eligible.
Okay.
Can't say definitively until we see the budget.
No, I understand. Yep. Thanks very much.
If I could just follow up on that for a second, because I, I think you and I had, I, I called your office at one time to inquire about that, and you had, you had told me that. And I went and looked in the rules, and it's really vague. Are there certain affordable housing things that you can do and some that you can't do? Or have the rules maybe not been developed enough to, to know yet? Or, because it was really hard to determine what you, what you could and couldn't do there.
It is vague. Unfortunately, the final rule made it just a little less vague. In short, it says in proportionate response to the pandemic. So, I think if you could identify, let's take it on a regional basis. In Plymouth County, if we could identify that 10, well, if we could identify 100 people went homeless and we want to build 10 units of housing, I think the federal government would say, that's a good use of the resources. You're trying to address a homeless situation that was the result of the pandemic.
If a town had a project that it was interested in, in doing, is there somewhere they could go to say, hey, we're interested in doing this? Does it comply? Could you get, can you find out first before you, you do it?
So, I would suggest I'm the first call. And please, don't hesitate, 508-830-9130. And I will direct the resource, if it becomes a complicated question, directly to our audit team. We can't definitively say yes because obviously we need to see the actual documentation and the work product, but we can give you a sense to whether the scope meets the guidelines. And please don't hesitate to do that because the rules are very, vague is a good description. I wish they'd tighten it up a little bit and give it some more directive, but they didn't. It said in proportionate response to the pandemic.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? Any questions for the board?
I have a question.
Ms. Bogart.
Of that $100 million that Plymouth County is getting, how much is allocated to Carver?
So, right now, they've released 25%, and Carver has allocated $554,258.44. We will be releasing more, but I can't say how much yet until we see how the program is going. However, I do feel that comfortable in saying you can at least count on double that amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Belvin?
Sorry. Under the hazard duty pay and the lump sum payments, how does, how does that calculate out to, I heard you say it goes by your wages, right? Is there a calculation of how much, if we're going to do emergency personnel, is there a way to categorize or find out? I know like our hospital did that. So...
So, again, private sector, and I don't know if it was a public hospital or private, is a little different. But here, yes, mostly it's done under limits. So, what the law says is, if you're thinking of doing hazard duty pay, you need to start with those employees that are the lowest income employees because that's what we're trying to do here, right? And so, unfortunately, some communities originally saw it when it passed last May and June and said, oh, we want to give it to certain folks. But they didn't realize that they were excluding the lower salaried people. So, you really have to focus on them first. But once you've covered those people, you can move up the scale. So, the law says, try and take care of the lower wage employees first and then move up. It has limits as to how much you can spend per hour and how much you can give as a lump sum. That's all in the law. I don't want to get into the details because it changes as to each level of employment. But they do want you to focus on the employees that were low wage employees and that were actually at work. So, if you worked remotely, that doesn't count. If you, you know, weren't dealing directly with people and directly with those products that may transmit COVID, you're not eligible. So, a lot of people thought, boy, I can cover a whole number of employees. That's not going to be the case. You really want to focus at your lower level employees and move up the, up the scale, if you will.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman?
One other quick question. So, the ARPA funds basically are two, two pots of money, right? One that comes directly to the town, and then one that goes to the, the county that we apply for, correct?
Absolutely correct.
So, the amount that comes to the town, do we still, do we, how do we disperse that as far as, is there an approval process? Or we are, we have the money and we can see how fit, as long as it fits into one of these five categories?
So, you have the money. You can spend it pursuant to any of the six categories.
Six, I'm sorry.
And my caution is just follow the rules.
Great.
And that sounds easier said than done. And so, what we've tried to do as a county is give you a place you could go to see the rule summarized. So, that might help you. But I do encourage towns to touch base with your legal counsel and with your audit team. A lot of towns are relying on their independent auditor to ask questions. Is this eligible? Is this something we should be considering? I will say that some communities got some information that later changed. So, now is the time to begin to ask those questions with the final rule being out. But yeah, that's your, that money is yours to spend pursuant to the rules. You, you don't need anything from the county to do that. But we provided you resources if you want them.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
I just have one quick. So, I just wanted to understand, if you're spending it on infrastructure, can it be spent on a project that has already occurred within a certain time period?
So, it does have a look back period, and we'd have to check that. I don't know how far back you can go. You could certainly go back to, I believe, May of 2021. I'm not sure you could go back beyond that, but possibly.
Okay.
It, it's intended to be for projects, though, that largely are in response to the pandemic. So, I, I find it hard pressed to think of projects that were already underway before the pandemic hit being eligible because I think the federal government would say, sorry, you were doing that before the pandemic. Now, I could see a project being exacerbated by the pandemic. I'll give you an example. A water project that had a smaller scope, but because of the pandemic, people staying home, you realize that the infrastructure wasn't sustainable, and you have to expand the scope of that project. That would be eligible. But everything has to be tied back to the pandemic. This isn't manna from heaven.
Right. I understand. I understand. Thank you.
Well, I know we understand in this room, but I can tell you that it's, it's a, a difficult conversation because people read and, and listen and see information that oh, well, we've got this money. We have to spend it immediately. Let's get it out the door. And I can spend it on revenue replacement and all kinds of things without reading the rules.
And that's one of the reasons we wanted to have you into the room before we talked about it or considered different things or anything, so we could get a guideline of what we could do, what we could. You hear so many different things that it's, it's nice to have some guidance, and we appreciate you, you giving us that, that, that guidance. Two, two final questions, if I, if I may. First of all, the, the money that the county received, that they're dispersing to the different towns, how, what method did you use to decide how, how much of any particular town?
Population.
Strictly population?
Strictly population.
Okay. All right. Good. And the final question, it's a three-year program. So, what if you, what if you started a project, but the, for whatever reason, the project didn't finish by the end of that third year? Would you forfeit the money?
No, as long as the project is well underway and gets completed by December 31st, 2026.
Okay. All right. Anything else from the board? Mr. Fantasy? Is Weston, you have anything?
Got all the information.
Chief, did you have anything for Mr. O'Brien? All right. Mr. O'Brien, thank you very much. We really appreciate you stopping by, as always.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a pleasure to get this information out. I do want to give you the check.
The check presentation, yeah. Did you want to, did you want to take a, a photo?
If we, if you don't mind, absolutely. It's always nice to have proof that we delivered a check to individual communities.
All right.
And I'll give the packet. If it's okay with you, I'll give the packet over to the town administrator. He has to save these for seven years. So, Mr. Fantasy, you'll need to put this in a safe place, and I have the actual check.
Put it in my bank account?
No.
It's a safe place.
Can we maybe do it up here?
You're only doing it in front.
That makes sense.
I think a little more room.
I will follow you folks.
Sorry.
Who wants to get the check out?
It's mine.
Want a smile?
What's that?
I want one with him just holding the check.
Oh, yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me. Great to see everybody again.
You're welcome.
We'll probably have you back again.
Don't be surprised if no one's there.
No worries.
Thanks.
Sorry, you're not allowed.
Yes.
I'm depositing it right now.
I'll give you the extra cash here, Mr. Fantasy.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is a discussion of possible vote on the Comcast contract renewal. I believe we have Attorney Hewie back with us tonight, as long as, as well as some other folks from the cable committee. And while that, while they get settled, just say to the board that this, we have a lot in front of us tonight. It's going to be a long meeting, so if someone needs a, needs a five-minute break, let me know. We'll take a break, okay? We appreciate you folks coming back and joining us tonight. Unfortunately, during our last meeting, a couple of members weren't able to make it, so we only had three members here. So, I appreciate you coming back and speaking to the entire board. Can I ask Mr. Mr. Hoffman and Ms. Hewins, did you get a chance to see the presentations on Area 58 or the previous meetings? You're familiar a little bit with that?
Yes.
So, the folks don't have to go through their entire presentation.
Yes, and I've read the KP Law's opinion.
Great. Thank you. All right. So, Mr. Belvin, I believe you had some questions for the Comcast representative. If you folks could just identify yourself for the folks at home before we start.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Fantasy, members of the public, William Hewie, cable counsel for the town.
Good evening, board. My name is Mike Gala. I am the senior government affairs manager that covers Carver and the South Shore.
Thank you.
What was your last name again?
Gala. G-A-L-L-A.
Oh, yeah. All right.
Good evening. My name's Dan Ginnity, 47 Bow Street. I'm on the cable advisory board.
All right. And I believe we have a, no, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jay John. I was also on the committee discussing this issue.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Belvin, why don't I let you start?
All right. So, I've kind of consolidated some of my questions. I'm more geared toward Comcast. And I understand the agreement that you guys have come to, and I've looked it over a little bit more. Some of the issues that I see as issues is everything's passed through to the subscribers. So, anything that we agree upon within this contract gets pushed to the subscribers in the town. Have a little issue with that. Comcast just did an increase to their subscriptions, and it seems like it keeps on going up and up and up and on up. And I understand that you have, you have fees that you have to take care of through all these different channels and whatnot. But I also see you're using the same wires to run internet through with the cable, which that's, infrastructure cost is very little for that going through the whole town because it's already there. But internet is not part of this agreement, which I think there should be some type of agreement to go with that. If you're using the wires for a different purpose than what is originally intended for, i.e. cable, then there should probably be some type of other fee associated with that that isn't passed on to the subscriber that's using it. So, it's, it's, I would like to see something in the contract. This is 10 years. This is a long contract. And I'd like to see something concrete for our senior citizens in the town, 55 or older, 65 or older, whichever it comes into, that there's clear-cut discounts to them that isn't passed through the other subscribers. Also, with that is low income, if there was something for low income, and then to lock in a basic service rate. Now, the laws may not allow that, but you can still do it if you wanted to. Then, same with box fees. You see box fees, and your remote control goes out, you have to go get a different one and whatnot. It just says that Comcast will provide one at the cost. And then, since this is a 10-year contract, possibly a, a one-year discount because basically Comcast is the preferred cable subscriber service in this town. And we don't see any other companies wanting to come in here to Carver for it, which basically makes you a monopoly in the sense of the town for cable and basically internet. There's not much in here for internet in the town of Carver availability. So, that being said, I would like to know, how much does Comcast profit off of the town of Carver every year? What's your gross annual revenue?
I mean, I don't have that figure sitting in front of me. I'm happy to provide that. It's also listed, you can, we provide every quarter. It's also listed, you can, we provide every quarterly payment with the gross revenue number, where you get your franchise fee percentage off of, so you could see that. But I'm happy to provide that if you guys don't have copies of it. But I don't have that exact number here.
Okay, and some of the other things is, Facebook is a wonderful thing sometimes, sometimes it's not. But just today, I mean, people having problems with their reception for cable and whatnot. And for the amount of money that, in my opinion, Comcast gets from our residents here in this town, just for cable alone, not even talking internet, because we don't have those figures too. I think that's a lot. And then, as I said before, with the pass-through, I mean, it's 5%. And that, everything gets passed through to the residents and the subscribers. And I think that at some point, we have to look at, I mean, if it's a monopoly within the town, that really you, this is what it looks like. All right, that we're locked in, because I know I can't get Verizon where I'm at. I have to do internet here. I think something has to be looked at that. All right, so, and maybe on this board, or some future board, that there is an internet fee for the subscribers or whatnot to the companies, since you're using the same infrastructure. So, I just want you to be aware that I'm not happy. I know a lot of people aren't happy with Comcast, but it's the only thing you got. And when it's the only thing you've got, you kind of deal with it. But we need you guys to understand that our residents deserve better. And set in rates, I think a 10-year contract's a lot. If we're going to give up a 10-year contract, I want to see something that the residents can say that we got. And I understand that PEG or the Community Access, they're going to get $30,000, they're going to pay for the infrastructure here. But it just, it's a lot. The contract looks really pro you, Comcast, for benefits, and what you will get over the next 10 years from the residents, okay? And what we're going to get is very little. And it's just passed on to the subscriber, so. I just wanted you to be aware that I'm just not happy with the way this contract looks.
And I appreciate your sentiments. I can tell you that we spent two years roughly on this contract. Correct me if I'm wrong. This is a very favorable contract for the size of the community. You're going to get a significant amount of revenue for your PEG access that comes to the town that was requested. We worked really hard to get to a good number for both sides. And yes, per law, that is passed through to the subscriber. With regards to any, you know, customer service issues, I'm in contact with not just Bob, but any town administrator, town manager within my footprint. Anytime there are issues that might come before the board or the town, and they come to me, we get those things taken care of immediately. We're constantly investing in our infrastructure, whether it's cable or data, i.e. the internet. We also have a 10-year, very successful, low-income program called Internet Essentials, where those that qualify receive the internet for $9.95 a month. We've connected over 10 million Americans since 2011. We also provide a senior discount to communities, including Carver. Bill has a senior letter that offers that. It is needs-based, but we do provide that to pretty much every community that we renew in. That being said, you know, again, if there's ever any type of, anything that you hear from the residents of Carver, I'm happy to address, whether I need to internally or whether I need to come before the board. But I think, given where we have gotten to with this contract, this is very favorable for the town as well. Yes, it is 10 years, but it's a significant increase in revenue that the town's going to get to offer, you know, very successful programs that Rich and his staff do at Area 58. And I think we've worked really hard with the committee and Bill and Rich, and I think we really have gotten a good deal here for both sides. And I'm hoping that the board will vote in favor of that tonight.
Mr. Belvin, anything else?
No.
Anything else from any other members of the board? It's yours.
So, did I understand you correctly when you said that the pass-through to subscribers is required by law?
Do you want to answer that?
I can. It's permitted by law.
Permitted by.
Permitted by law.
Okay. And I had one more. So, apparently, low income and senior discounts are available for subscribers. If they're available, how would these individuals go about getting the discounts?
So, for the, for both, they'd have to go through the application process. We do have an internetessentials.com website that takes everybody through it, or they can call and go through the process. They'd have to have the proof there for their low income. And same thing with the senior discount. They would have to contact us to get that senior discount.
Great, okay, that's good to know. I just wanted the residents to know that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hoffman? The last contract that just expired, was that a 10-year contract as well?
Yes.
Okay. And I also would like to be interested to hear from the Cable Advisory Board members, your feelings on the. Obviously, I know you voted unanimously to accept it, but how the, some of the issues that Bob's bringing up, I think a lot of people have. But I also know that certain things can be done and certain things can't be done, so.
Okay, well, in regards to the last contract, this contract is not that much different. 10-year contract before, 10-year contract this time regarding the pass-through. That is how the PEG channel or Area 58 is funded. So, when you turn on Channel 13, 14, 15, the programs are there because of the funding that is provided to Rich to run the station. And we've got a wide variety of programs. In fact, this last Thanksgiving, I'll just bring that up, because this will speak to the capital portion of the new contract. We were finally able to air the football game that was played in Carver live. So, you didn't have to be there in the cold. You could be at home making Thanksgiving dinner, and just turn on Channel 13, and there it was. This is part of keeping Area 58 up to the current-day technology. We're able to do that now. We are becoming able to go live from anywhere, but it requires funding. And that's part of what capital is, is buying brand-new equipment in order to keep up with what technology provides. Another element of this contract is we are going to have an HD channel. So, I know that some of us have been spoiled with HD. And occasionally, you'll see an old show in standard definition, and you'll think there's something wrong with your television. Nope, that's all we had for the longest time. That's not the case anymore. The future is now, the future is here. And we will have an HD channel to broadcast shows on. And I, from my point of view, there's a lot of exciting things going on at Area 58. And this contract will allow us to keep up with technology and be able to offer more programming, better programming, and be able to, in essence, serve the community better. I don't think I have anything else to say, unless you've got questions. Jay, you have something to say?
Dan, I couldn't, I don't think I could improve on what you've said. In fact, I do want to address, I think that, I do want to say something that might help Mr. Belvin in dealing with this. He brings up, I understand where he's coming from. And we also tried to see how much more we could fit into that contract. But there were some things that you can't have everything you want. And sometimes, you just have to settle for the best that you can get. And I think what Area 58 has been able to do with what they have available to them, and Dan alluded to some things that have become improvements that we'll be able to do. And I think it's, we've done the best that we could with what we had, so.
Anything else from the board? Anything else, Ms. Bogart?
After the last meeting and the questions I asked, I think it's great that Area 58, through this contract, will get money for upgrades. And that's so needed, that's so great. But what is kind of killing me is, you know, let's call a spade a spade. The grant from Comcast is not really a grant from Comcast. It's the Comcast subscribers in Carver giving that money to Area 58. And Comcast is kind of just the accountant, in essence. So, I think it's great that Area 58's getting money, but when we say we negotiated a great deal for Carver, it's not Comcast really giving us that $200,000, right? You're just kind of collecting it from residents and dispersing it. Not that it's not needed, but it's not, it's not a grant from Comcast, you know, overall. Right, let's just, let's just put it out there, like just.
It's passed through.
Right, it's, you know, just to make it clear. A grant from Comcast is really a grant from the Carver subscribers. Not that the money's not needed, definitely needed, but let's just tell the truth of who's really paying for these upgrades, so.
Go ahead, yeah.
What you said is correct. It is a pass-through with Comcast's name on it, but it's really coming from the subscribers. But I would say, and correct me if I'm wrong, the prior 10-year contract we came out of came with zero capital expenditure that came to Area 58, or at the time, CCAT. So, for the last 10 years, we got nothing. And I can tell you that I believe I've been on the board almost all 10 of those years. It was, from year to year, a challenge to try to keep up with the computers necessary, the editing software, capital, equipment. It was very difficult to keep up and try to keep up. And I think in some ways, we weren't able to do that. So, in a way, if you want to look at this as 200, whatever the budget amount is, if you were to see it over a 20-year deal, since we took, there was nothing taken out for the first 10, now we're going to be able to get something for the second 10. Maybe the sting is a little less. But I just wanted to say that for the last 10 years, we had nothing. And we felt the pain of trying to keep up and provide the services that we thought Carver deserved.
Thank you. Anything else on the board? Anything else from the Cable Advisory Committee? Mr. Gulat, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Sure. So, the one thing I'll say is, this is the third 10-year contract for Carver with Comcast. I believe it would have been Comcast initially with that. It could have been Adelphia. But they've all been 10-year contracts. It's always been a pass-through. This is just the standard fare in how this operates. I did happen to catch some things on Carver helping Carver that I wanted to just address to the community. There was a discussion that, why do we need Area 58? Shouldn't they just, couldn't we just put it back in the school like it used to be and have the kids run it? Kids never ran it. We were CCAT, and we were located in the school. And we were removed from the school by the school. They needed the space, and we had the opportunity, well, we had, we had to find a new location, so we did. And part of that was because of what we were able to do in joining together with a couple other towns to really make the access, PEG access, better for all three communities. And our ability to address all of the needs for all three communities much better. We're really looking forward to this. So, as to Dan's point of the $20,000 a year, $200,000 over the 10 years, in essence, for capital, it's $200,000 over 30 years, because we never received capital money previous to this time. But we did get a loan for startup capital, for upgrade capital when we went to the middle contract there. Again, this is standard. The internet, Bob, I agree with you, with as much coming in revenue-wise and as important as that is, believe me, we'd like to see that, particularly with people cutting the cord and not getting rid of the internet. That would be a huge deal for us. But it's not on the table. 1992, is that when that, is it 1992 when the legislation, the Cable Act happened? 83, okay, I was not certain on that. That was determined at that point. And it only related to the television portion of that. It could go to the access centers. And I don't know of any business that's going to open up that can of worms if they don't have to. Mike did a real good job getting us as much as we could on the capital, particularly starting from zero. I don't know of many other communities who have started from zero who have been able to get that kind of amount right now. It was a very solid amount. Obviously, not everything we asked for, but it is what it is. I mean, in order to do what we're doing with a staff of five, four of them just about full-time, one about half-time, 20 hours a week, with some volunteers, we need to have things in place that make it capable for us to do this. And newer equipment, giving us the technology that allows us to do such things as have the live football game, make it a little bit easier, because it used to be very easy to run a town meeting. But now, not being in the school, it's made it a little more challenging. So, we've got to do other things to make that happen. The, I will tell you, during the pandemic, Halifax and Plimpton brought in additional services to run extra lines and things. We were still doing all the video, but they were doing audio to separate rooms and things. To put in perspective, the deal you're getting, if you want to put it that way, from Area 58, they were paying, per town meeting, $8,000. And that was if they had no, that was if they didn't have a quorum. They still had to shell that out every time. And there were three times Halifax didn't reach a quorum during one of those times. So, in essence, every meeting we're having here, and we're doing over 100 a year, well over 130 last year, and that number is increasing. If you break that out over the cost per meeting, it's not much. And that doesn't even count the graduation, the concerts, any of the public access. And again, anyone can come in. It's been rough on the public access side, and really for all of us because of the pandemic. But anyone can come in, as some of you have taken advantage of in the past, I speak to the chairman here, and come in, learn how to use the equipment, take equipment out, do your own shows. And that's not just the Board of Selectmen, that's anyone in the community. And we will train you. There's no cost beyond what we have already built in with the pass-throughs. We will train you on any equipment you want to do. We'll show you what you need to do. We'll assist you as we can in getting these programs completed and put up. We don't edit for content, so if you're out of your mind, well, I'll be getting calls. But knock on wood, Carver's been lucky in that sense. But yeah, if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gulat?
I want to thank you guys very much for everything that you do, especially Area 58. I do. My questioning, like I said, there is frustration there. And I don't mean to push it toward you guys, push it more to Comcast. But I think we doing our due diligence of actually reading the contract, I think everyone did.
And I, I mean, we totally understand that. And I will say, none of the questions you brought up, we hadn't brought up, or the Cable Advisory Committee hadn't brought up previously. But we were in the trenches, and now you're just seeing it and seeing the contract before you, it makes total sense. And thank you to the entire Select Board for the diligence in looking at this and understanding the burden on the people of Carver, me being one of them as well, and also the benefit.
And I have used Area 58 through Boy Scouts and everything else. I mean, they are a great organization and a great opportunity for our town to utilize it. So, I want to say thank you guys very much. I appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Okay?
And just so I can confirm, the vote of the Cable Advisory Committee was unanimous to approve the contract, correct?
Yes, it was.
Anything else on the board?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Comcast contract renewal.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing.
Was I supposed to read it differently?
Yeah.
I beg your pardon. Okay. I move to approve the Comcast cable license with the town of Carver as presented. as presented by the Cable Advisory Committee for the period February 1, 2022, to January 31, 2032.
Second that.
Just a second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I, I just want to, before we take the final vote, I just want to thank the Cable Advisory Committee for their hard work on that. I know it's been a couple of years into this. And, and like Bob had said, and I think Rich, you had just said, you know, the first time that we saw this, obviously, a lot of the questions we had, we didn't really know that those were questions that you, the committee had had last year or this past year. So thanks for letting us express that. Because again, we are all-town residents, and we go through these frustrations. And we hear it from other people as well. But, but I just want to thank the board for their diligence on that. You know, it's not just something that happened overnight.
We appreciate you coming in, not once but twice. And, and please pass our thanks on to other members of the board that, that were in here.
I will do so, thank you.
So with that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. It is, it is passed. Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Thank you very much.
We'll take a five-minute recess. Back to order. Our next agenda item is the discussion and possible vote for recommendations of draft annual town meeting articles. We already covered the first item on our agenda, the special act to remove civil service. So we'll move on to the collective bargaining agreements. Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything on this?
Yeah, so, so this is for the, we have a few collective bargaining negotiations that'll be going on next month or two. So this is to have a placeholder for the town warrant for any, any agreements that we have in the collective bargaining.
Okay.
Okay, so it's, it's kind of a standard, standard warrant article.
All right. Any questions about this?
Mr. Chair, I was wondering, could we possibly have two votes? One to re, to recommend putting the article on the warrant, and the other whether or not to recommend it? Which is pretty traditional, what we used to do.
No, I don't see why we could. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I'd like to recommend that we fund and implement the cost items of collective bargaining agreements.
Okay. So first, I think you have to recommend to put it on the town meeting warrant.
Right. So I recommend to put on the warrant the submission of the following article to be placed on the FY23 annual town meeting warrant to fund and implement the cost items of collective bargaining agreements.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Do you have a second motion?
Yes, I'd like to recommend, I'd like to recommend that we approve this warrant article.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Mr. Belvin?
Because we don't know what the agreements are going to be, or how much money it's going to be, I, I think it's premature for us to actually vote to approve the article because we don't have that other information. So that's just my opinion.
Well, presumably, our town administrator will be bargaining these,
and we'll come to an agreement that is acceptable to everyone.
And we would have to vote on those agreements.
Absolutely.
Before we do that anyway, so.
Right, but I don't want to vote to approve this, that, just my, just my opinion, that I'd rather see what it is before I go ahead and, and say I'm for it.
Well, I suppose we could recommend this article at a later date.
I think we could, yeah, I think we could.
Yeah, yeah. And, and maybe it's better to wait till we put together the, the final draft of the article for the warrant, and then you can go right down the list and recommend or not recommend.
At a later meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's nice.
Rather than pulling them two ways and getting into a discussion.
Yeah, okay. So that's fine. So we will move on to the acceptance of Montello Street, the portion of Montello Street.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the submission of the following article placed on the annual FY23 annual town meeting warrant to accept as a public way Montello Street portion.
I'll second.
Again, if you want to read the, the back of this.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I was just using the front. Okay, I apologize.
Go by the times, 8:15.
All right. I move to approve the submission of the following article to be placed on the FY23 annual town meeting warrant to layout of Montello Street portion as a public way from Main Street, Route 58, to an intersection with an accepted portion of Montello Street, all shown on a plan entitled Plan of Road in the town of Carver, Massachusetts, Plymouth County, showing location of easements for the purpose of reconstructing Montello Street.
Is this, hang on, this is a separate, we have two different items. We have the acceptance of Montello Street.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then down below, we have, we have the adoption of the layout of Montello Street.
That's right, that's right.
I think, I think we're on different, different items here.
Yeah, yeah. I think you were right the first time.
Yes.
Move to approve the submission of.
I think you were. So I think you're on the, you're on the third, the third bullet point now.
Wait, can I, can I just finish this and do this one first? Before we do the other one, or do we have to?
Yeah, you can, because it's only to put it on the warrant. So it's not, it's not official act.
Okay, okay. So, so is the board asking to take the 8:15 agenda item out of order? Is that, is that what the board would?
Yes.
Would like to do? Okay. All right, so.
So you ended at Plymouth County showing location of easements.
Location of easements for the purpose of reconstructing Montello Street at Main Street for the town of Carver, dated January 11, 2022, prepared by VHB and on file with the town clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I, I have a question, because now I'm confused.
Okay.
The acceptance of Montello Street portion is under our 7:15 discussion, and it's next in line on this packet we were given. But yet, on 8:15 on the back, it's more in depth. Is it the same?
It's a two-part process, yeah.
Yeah, it's two different, it's two different items.
Yeah.
So what we did was, we just, we just voted to take the 8:15 item out of order.
But the 8:15 was the layout of Montello Street.
Right, that's, that's, that's the layout.
And this isn't to approve it, it's only to put it on the warrant.
But what Bob was originally reading was the acceptance of Montello Street. So if you look on the packet.
Right.
Articles for Select Board Review 21.
And then he went back and changed what he read. He went back and read the 8:15.
Right, but what I'm saying is, if you look at the packet that we were just given, Articles for Select Board Review, on this page two, if we're going to go in order, we just did the collective bargaining agreement.
You, you are correct. That was the next, that was the next item. Mr. Belvin mistakenly read the eight, the motion for the 8:15 item.
He was given bad advice.
So.
Throw me under the bus.
There was some miscommunication between Mr. Fantasy and Mr. Belvin. So what we did was, to avoid having to do all that, again, we moved forward to the 8:15 item.
So I guess the question is, is it all right to?
It is. Because again, it's only to put it on the warrant.
Right, okay.
You're not, you're not voting on, on.
So my, my question is, what, this acceptance of Montello Street?
It's different from the layout.
Is it different?
Right.
So where is the acceptance of Montello Street?
It's on, under the, on here.
It's on page two.
Right, but where is it? In this.
It's on page two. What you just read, the 8:15 item, to adopt it? You're adopting it to put it on the warrant. Yeah, we're not actually adopting the layout.
It's reverse order. So you're adopting it.
If you want to go back and just do it, the order.
It might ease any confusion. Let's, let's go back and, and go back to the, the third bullet point down, acceptance of Montello Street.
So I move to approve submission.
I move to approve the submission of the following articles to be placed on the annual FY23 annual town meeting warrant to fund, that's the wrong one, to accept as a public way Montello Street portion.
I'll second that.
You can't second.
Okay.
Sorry, I'll second that.
All right. The motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Wait, we're on the acceptance one?
We're on the third bullet, yes, the acceptance of Montello Street.
The one that has, the one that has eminent domain listed in it? Is that the one that has the, because I saw that term, and that was like red flaggy for me.
Okay, you're not voting on the.
Yeah, we're not recommending the article.
So all of this, we're just saying, these things can go on the warrant. And then we will vote our recommendations in the future.
That's right.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. All right, next is the moratorium on mounted solar photo.
No, it's.
Is that the recommendation? That was just to put it on the warrant. What is the vote on the recommendation?
No vote on the recommendation.
Would, would the board?
We're not doing those tonight.
Would the board like to take a vote on the recommendation of, of this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sure.
This seems like a relatively straightforward.
Sure, I, I'll make that motion. I, I'm, I move that we recommend the following article to be pla, following article on the town meeting warrant to accept as a public way Montello Street portion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion?
So now does my eminent domain question come into play?
If you want it to.
Does that have to be in there?
This is language from council.
Yeah. Is, what, what are the odds of eminent? I mean, does it seem like eminent domain's going to be used in this project?
I don't think so.
No, I think it just covers all of it.
All the parcels that they need to purchase, they're not positive enough, but they own almost all the parcels.
Yes. All, all the parcels have been purchased along Montello Street and in between Montello and Route 58.
So if that's already been done, and nothing else would need to be acquired, then can we just take the term eminent domain out to, it's a scary term.
Right.
Can we just take that term out?
I wouldn't do that until we check with council. So if you want to defer this when we go through all the recommendations, we can get that information.
Okay.
You know, and I, I hesitant to, to do them both tonight.
Okay, so I'll withdraw my.
Put it on the warrant and to do a recommendation.
I'll withdraw my motion.
I think we, it'd be easier to keep it.
Yeah.
That, that's fine. Okay, so the next item is the moratorium on mounted sol, solar.
Was there a vote on that?
Oh.
No, we, we, we did vote to put it on the.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yes.
I believe so.
That's right, that's right.
So next is the moratorium on mounted solar photovoltaic installations.
Okay, and this, this came from me. So I am proposing and asking that we put an article on the warrant to put a one-year moratorium on the approval of special permits for the large-scale ground-mounted solar installations. And in my opinion, it's imperative that we do this to give the town an uninterrupted chunk of time to assess how things are going in town with solar, and what, if anything, should be changed. And it would not remove the current bylaw, it would not change the current bylaw. It would just give the town a pause from approving new projects. And I have a few reasons for doing this, and we can get into the details later. But one, I think, I've heard people say it's too much, too fast. And I've heard people talked about us having a parade of projects through town. A former town planner told me that he felt pressured to get things rushed through the permitting process as fast as possible. And because of that, we need to figure out how to address issues proactively and reactively because there have been three projects under construction this past year that I know of that have had issues. And two of them have gone so far as needing stop-work orders. So we need to figure out what we can do to prevent it from getting to that level. Along with that is, we need to remove ambiguity in the bylaw because one of those problems was centered around the term approximately, which is very subjective. So if we can eliminate any subjective language from the bylaw, that would be beneficial. Before, I think we need to reassess the, the potential change of motivations. Because when the bylaw was brought up, in my, my, the best of my recollection, it was to help our local growers, the, the heart, the soul, the history of Carver, the, our neighbors, help them stay afloat during tough years so they can stay growers. And I think a lot of the projects now aren't even owned or permitted to the local growers. And I don't even think they own a lot of them. Then we need to maximize the town's benefit. Because I said it in a prior meeting, that a former building inspector told me that the town's being taken advantage of, and we're not getting the fees that we could. So I just, again, this doesn't change the bylaw, doesn't stop it. It would just let Town Meeting have a discussion about pausing, approving new special permits. The projects that have been approved are going to go through to see if things are really being done for the town's best interests. Because I, we've been experiencing problems, so I think things can go better. So this would just let Town Meeting have a chance to talk about pausing things for a year. So, I mean, I've got, I can say more, but that's, again, if. So I would just hope you guys would put the article on the warrant to let Town Meeting talk about it.
All right.
So, man, also, there's a, there's a petition article, basically the same thing. So this would take that out from a petition article to put it on the warrant. And this is not uncommon in towns to do this, to have a, a kind of a period where they can look at how many are going in and where they're going in.
Two separate articles, one brought forward by Ms. Bogart and one brought forward by somebody else?
No, so this is brought forward by Ms. Bogart, but she also has, I don't, was it yours?
Yeah, I had.
A petitioned article, basically the same thing.
I had asked Mr. LaFawn to put a placeholder in so I could bring this to you guys, and I didn't hear back. I, it was getting time, so I wanted to be able to. So I did put a petition in, just to make sure that it could get there. But if, if you guys and we vote to put it on the warrant, then I will take back the petition. I just wanted.
Yeah, my question, we're just going to have one article.
Right, right.
We're going to have two articles to address the same thing.
I will withdraw that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Discussion from the board? Is there a motion?
I move to vote to amend section 3580 of the town zoning bylaw to add section, add a section to adopt a 12-month moratorium on the issuance of special permits for new installation of large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations.
I'll second.
And again, we're just placing this article, you, you want that previous wording, right? The submission of the article, we're just.
To be placed.
Just submission of the article.
Just to be placed on, so this is not a recommendation.
Right.
So we're going to add this, this wording. I move to approve the submission of the following article to be placed on the FY23 annual town meeting warrant. You're okay with adding that wording to the?
Yes, that's what I, I was kind of.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Cutting it back.
Want to make sure we're clear, that's all. So we have a, we have a motion, I'm sorry. Do we have a second?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Let's see, next is the transfer and disposition of 11 Green Street.
I move to approve the submission of the following article to be placed on the FY23 annual town meeting warrant to transfer from the treasure collector to the Select Board for disposition the property located at 11 Green Street, Carver, Mass. Just a quick note on this.
Can I second that first?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. This, this property went to land court and came out of land court on June 28, 2021. And if you look at the actual article, this disposition would be to a not-for-profit organization or other qualified entity for the purpose of providing affordable housing to eligible persons honorably discharged from the United States military service and to further authorize the Select Board to take any action required to accomplish the purposes of this article.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion here? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have a number of placeholders by a select board member, Mr. Belvin. We have the interim town administrator, town administrator screening committee bylaw, the town administrator bylaw, discipline appointed town officials, accessory apartment bylaw, yard sale bylaw, and burglar alarm bylaw. Mr. Belvin?
All right, I'm going to kind of take these out of order. The burglar alarm, I don't see that as being very viable. I don't think anyone's ever done anything with that bylaw in our bylaws. No one's enforced it, done anything with it. So I think it should just be eliminated, in my opinion. The yard sale bylaw, that's the other thing. I don't think we need a yard sale bylaw. Those are easy. The fence bylaw, that one, we have nothing in our bylaws to regulate fences, okay? And as one of the fence viewers and having to talk to residents in town about fences, I think we need to have some set guidelines to put a bylaw up. Just so people all follow the rules. Because one of the rules is if you put a fence up on a lot line, right on the lot line, it's now owned by both parties. So if one neighbor turns around and puts a fence up and they pay for it, 10 years down the road, it starts falling apart, and he says, hey, you got to go fix that. No, sir, you do. You got to fix half of it. I mean, why should one resident turn around and force another resident to pay to repair a fence that they never installed in the first place? So what I brought forward is a draft, and I just want you guys to look at this. It's my final writing of it. But we have to have something, something that turns around and says, this is what fences are. This is where they should go. And that's pretty much it. I mean, have you guys had a chance to look at this and get a assessment of it to say, is this something that you want to bring forward to town meeting? I tried to pick up everything I could pick up from state law, local laws from other towns, and just put a little bit together, but what do you guys think about it?
So I haven't really had a chance to look at it, Mr. Belvin, but I have a question. I'm surprised this isn't covered. Some of these things that you have to do with the fence, is that not covered under the building commissioner's purview? It is.
It is, yeah.
Yep. So we already have something.
Ultimately, the building commissioner will be looking at complaints on this.
Right. So we already have something in place.
I don't know if it says fences particularly.
Well, I know, for example, when we went to put our fence up, you know, we had a survey plan. We had to put it X number of feet into our property line, so it's actually on our property line. It's not shared. And we were solely responsible for it. That's how it was explained to us. I just don't know if it's necessary, really. I appreciate what you're saying, but.
I'll jump in. I support putting this on there because I think it's reasonable and it's important. And if there are kind of regulations or standards down in permitting, then getting it in the bylaws just kind of puts it in a more central location. The one issue that I did have with it was in the non-surveyed fences, the property owners will be required to pay for a surveyor determined by the fence viewer. That was a little red flaggy. That means each fence viewer can pick a surveyor of their own choosing. I think there should be a pool of maybe town-approved ones that they could pick from, like.
The person whose property they're putting the fence on picks the surveyor. My neighbor doesn't pick my surveyor for me.
Well, no, right now, it says the surveyor would be determined by the fence viewer. So that means each fence viewer could pick a surveyor that he or she likes.
Well, you should change the fence viewer bylaw rather than the fence bylaw.
I can explain that. The rationale here is if you get a friend who is a fence viewer, I mean, a surveyor, and he's a little more liberal on how he puts his markers down, okay? And then the neighbor turns around, they challenge it. And then now you've got an issue. If you have an independent party saying, hey, this is it. And it mostly goes toward the fact of if somebody puts a fence up on your property, okay, in order for you to get rid of that, number one, you have to get a surveyor to survey it. All right? And you got to pay for that. And if it's on your property, then you got to go to court and get that money back. Saying, and they got to remove it off your property. All right? But some people don't have that amount of money to do that, okay? So, and if it's on the property line, then both of them have to pay.
It can't be on the property line. It has to be.
Where? Where does it say that, Sarah? I just want to, where does it say that?
That's what I've been told by the surveyor and the fence people that put our fences in. I think this is our third fence now. Has to be about two feet into your own property.
I can tell you for a fact, without having a bylaw in place, because there's no state law, and I've researched this, that says it has to be a certain distance. If we don't have it in our bylaws, then the building commissioner really can't act, okay? Because he can turn around and look at it and say, all right, well, it's in disrepair. Go talk to the fence viewer, and he'll go ahead out there and look at it. But in all actualities, if we don't have something in place that says a fence has to be this far off a property line, then they can put it on the property line. And we don't have anything in this town. So, I mean, if you guys want to bring the building inspector in here and discuss this with him, all right, I have no problem with that, okay? And if I'm wrong, I'll turn around and I'll admit I'm wrong. But.
Do you want to defer this to the next meeting?
I have a couple, I have a couple of questions just before we defer. First of all, I guess something like this, I would prefer it come from the planning board who've had time to discuss it. We may need it, we may not need it. I'm really not sure, but I would, I would like to see the planning board talk about it, quite frankly. And I certainly, I would like to have the building inspector have some input into the whole thing because he's the one that's going to be charged with enforcing whatever we do or don't do and I, he's the professional here, not, certainly not me. And I would like to, I would prefer something like this come from the, come from the planning board, where they've had time to talk about it and vet it a little bit. That, just me. We may need it, we may not need it. I haven't really looked into the town fence, fence laws that, that much. We've had other things going on, but I just, I would prefer to see it come from the planning board after they've had some time to talk about it and
Yeah, I agree.
Work through it. That's just my own, my own thought.
So I have a question. So in the building code that we have, there's nothing relating to fences now that's in the town?
I think.
There must be. I mean, you know, for, where there's fence viewers, they view fences, so there's going to be a bylaw. I haven't looked. But I can look at that if you want to defer this to the next.
And I understand where none of us are building professionals here, but am I correct? I thought it was, the rule was when the town didn't have some type of bylaw, that state bylaw sort of
State law.
Kicked in. Is that true?
That is true.
And I'm fairly certain that the state has guidelines regarding what, where fences are put and how they're put and things like that.
I mean, I agree with Paul, but there should be something, somewhere for people putting up fences to refer to. So that's why I wasn't sure if there's a building code, if they go to the building commissioner and they, he tells them, okay, this is what the rules and regulations are before you do it. If not, then.
There's an application for a fence down there. You can pull one of those out. But we don't have any bylaws. There's nothing in our zoning bylaw for fences. And if you look at the state law on the fences, mass general law, there's very little in there. And that's from, what I got from state law is in this, not for the, I, it's me individually saying 24 inches from the lot line. And that's the rationale for that is in case you need to repair that fence, you're not going to go on the neighbor's fence if it's on the lot line. Five feet from the roadway for certain types of fences because you want to be able to have a line of sight when you pull out of a road. If you're at the corner, you don't want to put a stockade fence right against the road
Right.
because you want to have line of sight, all right? And part of this also says that when you do this, for this, you have to get approval from the police department, fire department, emergency services that says, hey, if you're on a corner of a road, you have to be able to see. And you don't want to put up and then say, oh, my God. One of the other things is this will turn around and help hopefully with conservation issues that it's going to give a red flag to say, well, you can't put a fence up within the conservation guidelines, all right, of the 60 or 100-foot buffer without going to conservation. So, like I said, there's a lot more to this that you can help, but it's a starting point. So I think I've talked enough about it, but it, the last thing about the planning board, the planning board only acts as if someone brings it up to them. They don't sit there and say, oh, well, I'm going to look at this one here. If it's for them, okay, and they're interested in it, yeah. You don't see them bringing up brand-new things a lot unless somebody else brings it up to them. So this is my opportunity to go ahead and bring up an issue that you want to do and you don't.
No, I understand. I understand. I'm just, those are just my thoughts. That's all. I just think I would prefer to see it come that way. I'd prefer to see them meet with the building inspector and discuss it a little bit and hey, and work it through. But again, the board can take whatever, whatever action the board, does the board feel comfortable taking action on this tonight?
Well, wait, are we just, we're just recommending for article placement because this is the third? Were we going to let him talk about all of his and then recommend them?
I think we should do them individually. We should decide whether we're going to recommend that we put it on the warrant.
So then we should go back and do that with, because he already mentioned burglar alarm and yard sale. So we, should we do that now?
Well, I think we've done, we've done, talked about the fence bylaw pretty extensively. So let's handle this one
Okay.
and then go back to the beginning maybe and go through.
I'd like to ask our building commissioner if he could come here and tell us what we do, what is in place.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not against that.
Okay, well, I move to approve the submission of the following article to be placed on the FY-23 annual town meeting warrant to add a fence bylaw to the town of Carver bylaws.
And I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just one thing.
Yeah.
All right. If what I said isn't true, and we had the building inspector talk about this, we can always pull it from the warrant. And I have no problem with that. Just like I did the last time that I wanted articles put on and we didn't get a chance to discuss them all, all right, I'll be happy to pull them off.
Well, there is a placeholder for this, so I, before I vote, personally, I'm just speaking for myself, before I vote to put something on the warrant, I would prefer to get the building inspector's input on it, myself.
So if we do vote to put this on, can we have the building inspector at the next meeting to clarify this?
Yeah, he's available.
And we could always ask the planning board for their recommendation to post in the warrant, right?
We can ask anyone. Go ahead.
Being a zoning article, they still have to have a public hearing to go along with it.
And that's why I would have preferred that they, that they do it that way.
Yeah, they usually, they usually do zoning articles, not us.
I would like to see a public hearing on it and get people's input. There's a lot here.
One other quick question. Paul, on this, it says definition, follow definitions provided on the chapter 49 under title seven and existing town of Carver bylaws. So does that mean there are existing bylaws concerning fences that you found?
No.
All this is brand new?
I put that in as just if there are bylaws that were in place years and years and years ago, which I haven't seen any.
Okay.
So I just kind of did the legal piece of putting everything in to cover all bases.
Okay, well, I had made the motion to approve the submission.
Right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of placing it on the warrant?
Aye.
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 Opposed? I mean, opposed?
I'd like to wait till we hear from the building commissioner.
So it's three to two? Okay. All right. Let's go back, Mr. Belvin, and start from the beginning, okay? So we got the town administrator bylaw. And we have several different versions of town administrator bylaw here in our, in our packet. Let's see. We have this all black wording one, which is the original, which is what's on the bylaw, on the books right now. And then we have a couple of different versions that we talked about approximately a year ago with some different wording. And again, Mr. Belvin, this is your, your item, so.
Now, if I may, Mr. Belvin, I'd like to know, this copy that I found at home and distributed to you guys was the original one that we voted on December 8th, 2021. I have written down five zero. I guess we must have voted for it five zero. But there was a later version that I think you made more changes to.
I didn't, I couldn't find this one. When I started, when I went looking, I couldn't find this one to incorporate it in.
Yeah, I found it. That's why I brought it tonight.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
That is, this one.
The one with red, the one with red, yep.
All right. So do we, my question is to the board is, do we want to move forward with making the changes on Sarah's copy here that we already approved before the town meeting? Or I actually made some other changes in here that I would like to see?
Well, it's been a year since we talked about these changes. So I think what we should do is probably, it may go a little faster, but I think we should, if we are interested in changing the town administrator bylaw, I think we should probably start from the beginning and go through them item by item. Because again, it's been a year since we voted on these changes. And some people's thoughts may have changed in a year. So I think that's probably how we should, we should handle it. I think, Mr. Belvin, you have, would you prefer to discuss your suggested version that I think you distributed to the board? That's substantially different, I think, than the other, the current version or the?
Yes. All right. So where it says at the top, 2022 Town Meeting, Belvin Proposal, Chapter Three Town Administrator. First one was changed everything from selectman to the select board, or board of selectmen to select board. That was the first change that we did. Under 3311, where I put, the select board may appoint an interim town administrator if the need arises. A subcommittee of the select board will negotiate terms of a contract and voted on by the select board.
And B voted on by the select board.
And B, oh, change B. Sorry.
Okay.
B, voted on by the select board. The select board shall appoint a full-time town administrator from a list prepared by a screening committee. And then I put down the screening committee makeup there, where it is, a screening committee must have nine members. They all have to be town residents, no town employees. I didn't separate those. Or immediate family members of town employees, which we'll go back further because it actually defines it later of what each one of those are. Select board appoints five residents from Carver, one being a business owner, one member appointed by the planning board, one by the conservation, one by school committee, and one by finance committee.
Doesn't mention anything about residents at large.
Well, we get to pick five residents. All right. So there'd be four at large, one being a businessman, so that's five.
Business owner.
Hmm?
Business owner.
Business owner. You want to get rid of owner?
No, you said businessman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Business owner. Is, what do people think about that section there? Do they agree with it, disagree with it, or you want to leave it open to whatever the next board comes up and let them handle it, whichever way they want to do?
So I guess my question, screening committee is nine members, five of which will be a business owner, planning board, conservation, school committee, and FinCon.
Yeah.
Those are the five. So there's four that the board would pick at large.
Did I not do the numbers right?
No, 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 you're right. I just want to make sure.
The math works.
Yeah.
Yep.
I went over that a couple of times just to make sure. Yes.
I don't think so.
Right.
I think it's confusing the way it's written here. So, because it sounds like we can pick five residents and then the business owner, planning board, conservation, school committee, and finance, which.
It should be five, sorry, it should be four residents from Carver, one being a, and one of them being a business owner, would be six. I mean, would be number five, six, seven, eight, nine.
What about if you're number one, screening committee must have nine members, then you have sub-bullet points. Member of the finance committee, member of planning board, member of conservation, member of finance, a local business owner and four members at large or something. Let's break that down.
That's actually better.
Yeah, okay. Got to go back to maths. The next one, next section is 3312, where select board shall appoint a town administrator to serve. select board shall appoint a town administrator to serve three years and shall fix compensation for such person within the amount appropriated by town, that's supposed to be town meeting. At no times, time shall the town administrator contract be more than three years or less than two years. That was a change when I was playing with it this morning. Uh, salary shall not be renegotiated yearly.
I like the version that we had in the copy Sarah passed out.
Okay.
I mean, it's very similar, but.
Yeah, well, it, it's not really similar though, I think, I remember this and we spent a lot of time talking about it and, and I think, I think I, I personally, I, I don't, I want to have some flexibility. You, you may have a, a great town administrator candidate that you want to lock up for four or five years and.
Yeah.
At the same token, you may have somebody who, for whatever reason, only wants a two-year contract. So I, I would, I don't want to bind future year, future boards that they just can offer one. I, I don't, you never, you never know what the situation's gonna be, so I.
And that's, I think, why we, how we came, on the version that I have, how we came up with that, because it says at no time shall a contract be more than five years, so that way the board can make it two or three.
That's right.
If they want, but, um, and then the contract is subject to extension only in the last year of the contract. We talked about this to death at one of our, a couple of our meetings.
Yes, we did.
All right, um, let's see, next one is three, three, two, two.
Well, can we, it's not interrupt you, just on, on, on three, 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 one, and, and three, three, one, one. Maybe we should, even if we don't vote on it tonight, maybe we should try to get a sense of where the board's at on those items. Do, do we, do we feel more comfortable with the current language? Do we feel more comfortable with the language that we talked about last year, approximately last year? Or do we feel more comfortable with the language that Mr. Belvin has brought forward this evening?
I'm personally, I'm more comfortable with the one we talked about last year, the, the version that I handed out. That's, that's three, three, one, two. And I just read it, uh, the select board shall appoint the town administrator to serve for a term not to exceed five years and shall fix compensation for such person within the amount appropriated by the town. At no time shall a contract be more than five years. The contract is subject to extension only in the last year of the contract.
And then three, three, one, three was also one, I, I agree, I, I like.
Yeah. And that one reads, the select board may appoint an interim town administrator for a period not to exceed six months. The select board may appoint an interim town administrator for successive six, six-month periods as they deem necessary.
I think maybe the only suggestion there might be, because I think the way it reads is that if you get to the end of that six-month term, but for whatever reason, as we've, we've seen recently, you don't have a candidate for permanent town administrator, maybe you don't want to appoint an interim for another six months. Maybe you, maybe we need to change that wording a little bit to just say the select board can extend the contract on a.
That's a good idea.
I, I, I don't know exactly what the wording would be, but, you know, we need another two months, or maybe you don't want another six months. Maybe you just want another couple of months.
The select board may extend an interim town administrator's contract as they deem necessary.
As they deem necessary.
Yeah, but part of that discussion was, an eighteen-month extension is not really an extension, it's like a short contract. So that's where we came up with the.
Maybe, maybe instead of successive six month, up to six month.
I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah.
So is where you give the option of, like, that way you can do one, two, three, four, five, or six months.
I think the one thing we all didn't take into account last year was how difficult it might be to find a permanent town administrator that we all feel, feel comfortable with. And, and that, I think, certainly what happened recently, that's changed my thinking on, on, on that. We certainly, but we certainly don't want to have, be paying two people for, for a few months, so.
So what about may appoint an interim town administrator for successive periods of up to six months as they deem necessary? I think that's what you're saying, Jim.
Are we even if we just mirror the, what the first line is, the select board may appoint an interim town administrator for a period not to exceed six months. The select board may appoint an interim town administrator.
The select board.
For an additional.
I, I, I personally would just say the select board may extend the interim town administrator's contract as it deems necessary, or as they, as they deem necessary, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, lead up to the board.
Yeah, and let's leave it up, let's not limit the incoming board.
You just don't know what the circumstances are and.
Yep, you're right.
Can, sorry. Three, three, one, one, can we just go back to that? Um, for the screening committee membership? Are we all in favor of that, to actually set it in place?
So we're doing away with the chiefs, which is what we had on this, this previous one.
Yeah, I think we should add the two chiefs back in. And that leaves us, that leaves us two other at-large members.
But, so on the, on the flip side of that, so we have no town employees. I know we talked about this the last time, but.
So, I think the issue comes into play is that, um, the town administrator can't be their boss. So like, the fire chief has a contract with the board of selectmen, so we're his boss. The police chief, we have a contract with him. So he's our employee for it, so that's why it can come in that. I don't know how that relates to other, um, emergency personnel that we have to have contracts with those other ones, but.
Well, they, they can't be, they can't be appointed by the town administrator.
Administrator, right.
So I think this phrase about no town employees or immediate family members, um, Mr. Belvin, comes under a conflict of interest law. So I don't think that's necessary to have it in there.
Well, I.
I mean, we figured it out all by ourselves last time.
No, we had to go to council and, and get a determination from it.
Well, now, now we know.
But somebody years down the road may not know.
Well, hopefully they'll go to council too.
Like I said.
Or, or.
This is the, this is the.
If you want to leave this in, then you have to make the exception for the two chiefs, I think.
Yeah, I think it's not bad, but the wording needs to be changed.
Yeah.
Maybe council can give proper wording, or one of us can do it to allow the chiefs, but disallow others. I just think it's not worded.
Yeah.
I, I think this section needs a, a lot of, a lot of careful, careful thought. I mean, I, I personally, I'm not even sure I want to bind future boards by who the screening committee would, would be. I, I, I don't have an issue letting future boards at the, at the time choose the screening committee. We just don't know what the situation's gonna be and.
So then tonight, can we just vote to put it on the warrant, but then when we have the discussion for the recommendations, then we can kind of make these changes and, and recommend for or against it based on the wording then? Because Bob keeps saying, let's, you know, go one, two, three, four. Did you anticipate tonight was the deep discussion?
No.
Like, we're just, we're just putting it on the warrant, we're not.
Okay, well.
That's fine, just keep it, just keep in mind that if we keep putting off deep discussions.
Right.
We're gonna have some very long select board meetings, because at some point we have to have deep discussions.
And so, you know, to that note, I want to point out, Bob, on your newer version, you, what you're calling three, three, one, three, it's incorrect, that's three, three, one, four. If you look at the original, um.
Like I said, I didn't have your copy here.
No, no, I mean, just the, even the original one here. So, um, the, the copy that I gave you, three, three, one, three, we've decided to use the version in, that I gave out. But this one that you, that you list as three, three, one, three, the town administrator shall be appointed on the basis of educational, executive, administrative qualifications and experience, that's actually three, three, one, four in the current bylaw.
Is it, is it?
I think the current bylaws.
I'm looking at the current bylaw, and it doesn't have that.
Yeah, the three, three, one, four, I'm sorry, the three, three, one, three on yours, Sarah, I don't think is in the current one.
Yeah, I don't think it is.
Okay, so I, it must have gotten added when we discussed this previously and we changed the numbering to three, three, one, four.
So, but it doesn't have to line up with the same numbers, because this.
Yeah, you know what it was? That was three, three, one, three on the la, on the, on the orig, the one, the current.
On the original, yeah, you're right.
Just got pushed, we added a three, three, one, P, one, three, which was the interim town administrator wording.
Correct.
Is it, can I just, is it the will of the board that the board feels that they want to change the current town administrator bylaw? Is that?
Yes.
Is that a, is that something that everybody wants?
Not really. I think it's pretty good the way it is, I.
I think if for no other reason, it's important that the contract not be renegotiated every year. If you sign a contract, i- if that's the only change made, in my opinion, that's important.
No, and the, the only other change, I think, and I agree with you on that, is we need to, um, have the phrase shall not hold any other public office elective appointment or engage in any business or occupation.
So I think it needs to be changed, maybe not as in-depth as we've talked, but I do think there are things that are imperative.
Okay, so can we, can we take a vote that we want to put a town administrator bylaw on the warrant? And come back, everyone take all three copies home, there's a lot here to go through. We'll take all three copies home, we can review them and come back with some very specific, quick hitting re.
Sure.
Recommendations for the, for the next meeting. And we all agree that we want to change the bylaw?
Yes.
On those two points, yes.
Or, or any point, I mean, as long as we want to change something, then it would be, we, we need a, a warrant on it.
Right, correct.
So.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I, I guess my, my question, Mark, you brought a, a good point, the screening committee membership, what it's made of. Do we want to restrict future boards? I think a lot of this, the more I'm thinking about it, we want to be, we don't want to be as specific as possible, because we do want to give the future boards some leeway on membership of it, uh, some other things. I agree, there are certain things we definitely should change that we've run into this past year. So I'm, maybe we should, when, when we think about these things, give some leeway to future boards.
I, I, I agree with that, which is why personally, I'm not sure I want to specify in the town administrator bylaw who the screening committee.
Right, so something like, something like that, that's a good.
Future boards.
Yeah.
That's a good discussion to have on that.
That's a, that's a discuss, but as long as we want to make any changes, that we know we need a, a warrant article. So that's what I'm trying to, we, together, that we do need that. So can we, can we have a motion to put a warrant article on the, on town meeting?
I will make a motion, is there something officially written out that I have?
Uh, same thing, I moved to approve the submission of a.
I moved to approve the submission of the following article be placed on the FY twenty-three annual town meeting warrant.
Then the bottom, ITA, TA screening committee bylaw.
The ITA.
Well, it's a whole bylaw, right? TA bylaw?
Yeah.
Yeah.
TA bylaw.
The TA bylaw.
TA bylaw.
Kind of, we kind of, kind of merged the two, so.
Yeah.
TA bylaw.
Okay. All right, so that's fine, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm not opposed, I have a question.
Did you have something to add, Mr.?
Yeah, just, um, I suggest you, you go by the original document of the bylaw and make changes to that.
Yes.
Because it's too complicated to try and put together an article with all these different copies going in.
I, I, I agree, which is one of the, one of the reasons that I thought maybe we should condense it, go back.
Yeah.
Go, everyone go home and come back with some specific recommendations, it was very.
Yeah, and my other suggestion is not to make it too restrictive, because times are changing and it's more difficult to get a town administrator if it's very, a very restrictive bylaw, where they can't do this, can't do that, can't do this, can't do that, you know, so that's my comments anyway.
Thank you. All right, so as we go through, through the list here, let's see, so we, the town administrator bylaw, so the discipline of appointed town officials. Did you have?
That's Bob.
Just grab my paper here.
So before Bob goes into that, so the ITA slash town administrator screening committee bylaw and town administrator bylaw are basically going to be the same.
Kind of merging, yeah.
Okay. So one of those placeholders, we don't need that, right?
Yeah.
All right, so this one here, I don't kind of record. When a town administrator has a, a conflict, whether it be a disciplinary conflict or a conflict with, um, employees, there's no one above him except for us. But there are certain things that we can't do, and if he has a conflict dealing with an issue, then we were basically told we have no, um, no rights to turn around and force him to do something, and if he says no, then we can discipline him for that, but, um, we, I, it's my opinion, due to issues that have come up, that we need a conflict of interest bylaw, that if there's a conflict between a town administrator and an employee or a, um, group of employees or whatever comes up as an issue, dealing with, um, elected or appointed officials, that we have the ability to turn around and investigate those issues, to go ahead and if there's discipline that needs to be done, that we can be able to discipline. The only issue with this, and I've thought about this, because as elected officials, you can't discipline an elected official. Can't do it, uh, and I actually put that in there. Um, I also put in, if there's a bargaining unit, a union contract involved, all right, you gotta follow the contract, and the appeals for the discipline. I really thought about this, um, and there was a public information request that was sent out, and, um, I got a copy of it, and in that, there was some severe, um, issues. And an employee was not disciplined, that should have been disciplined, in my opinion. Our policies in our town here are clear that if a town administrator won't act on our own policies to discipline somebody for something they did, whether it was, um, by accident or on purpose, then we should be able, as a board of selectmen, to overrule that decision. And there's this issue that came up, which the information was put out there, that, um, private information was put out to a large group of people. And nothing, if it was, our council said it's okay to release, that means nothing was done, if it was redacted.
I, I think we should just confine ourselves to the, the warrant article here and not.
And I, I agree, if I may, if I may, Mr. Chair, um, I think we should also take out particular instances or cases or individuals or things that we've experienced here and look back at the history of why we even have a town administrator in the first place. It used to be that the town was run by five political people. And people called in favors, and there was nepotism, and there were, you know, backroom deals, what have you. The, the town voted, the town meeting voted to establish the position of the town administrator, to get rid of all of that, to have an impartial person, you know, in, in, in office who does the discipline. And if they don't think discipline is necessary, then that's, that's on them. I think what you're proposing, um, is to kind of make us kings and queens here, and I just don't, I think that's wrong. I think that it, it, that's just not the way things should be done. You know, I don't, not suggesting they should have been done the old way, way back when, but, you know, as they say, that's the way it was. Well, it's not like that anymore, and I, I personally don't want to go backwards. I think we've made big strides towards, uh, being a more professional board by having a professional guide us and do those kinds of things that we really shouldn't be doing. That, that's, that's my take.
I think, I think, Mr. Belvin.
In addition to the question of who defines conflict, well, that's really hairy, I mean.
Mr. Belvin.
So. Conflict is really limited here, where it's conflict between what the town administrator does and. and what it affects the employee. And if, if the town administrator fails to follow his duties, okay, that he should be doing and following our bylaws and following our policies. And if that was not done, the board of selectmen should act upon it. And the way it's written now, we can't do anything.
The board of selectmen, the town administrators work for the select board, at least in this town they do. And so we can actually discipline the town administrator if we so choose. But to, to take over the role of discipline, I think is really the wrong direction, it's going backwards. We, we don't need to go there. We have what they call a strong town administrator by law right now, and I think it needs to stay that way. I, I don't, my goal here is not to become a queen.
And if I could just, I, I think what we're doing here is we're deciding, we're not debating the merits of an article. We're deciding whether we want to add an article to town meeting, whether we feel the need to add something to the warrant. My personal feeling on this is that we hire a town administrator for a reason, and that reason is to run the day-to-day operations of town hall. And we are elected to set policy for the town, but we're not elected to run the day-to-day operations of town hall. And I think that this particular item changes that equation a little bit. So for that particular reason, I don't, I don't think this should be on the town meeting warrant, and I'm, I'm, I'm not going to vote to put it on the warrant. But, uh, the, again, the board can do what, whatever, whatever they want. But I think, let's decide whether we're going to put it on the, on the warrant, and then later on, we can debate on whether we want to, if the board puts it on the warrant, we can decide whether we're going to approve, approve it or not. Anything else from the, from the board on this?
I, I guess my, I'm, I'm kind of conflicted on this because I can see Bob's point, and I can see Sarah and Mark's point. My only concern with this is you're now giving the five-member board. So say there are three members that can make the, the necessary vote. Three members now can overrule the town administrator for any type of discipline.
That's correct.
And they, those three don't agree with what the town administrator. So whether it's right or wrong, if there's, and again, I'm just taking worst-case scenario. Three members have it in for somebody, they can say, I don't care what ex-town administrator said, we're going to get this done.
That's right. And, and it's come, it, there've been cases in the past where it came close, and it was only because we did have a strong town administrator by, in, by law in place, where it was pure politics motivating the three.
Right.
Select board members.
And, and, and again, my, the conflict I have, is that something that we should decide to put on the warrant? Or should we put it on the warrant, let the town, the, the voters decide that? So that's my conflict of whether or not to approve this to go on the, on the warrant.
Well, again, that, just going past, it was, it was in the mid-nineties when town meeting voted in this TA by law to start with. And it's a strong TA, not a weak TA. And then that's what that means. They're, they're there to, to run the everyday business of town.
Mr. Fennessey, can I ask you, do you see anything in this that would violate the town administrator by law that we have?
I don't know, I'd have to look at it closely. But, you know, well, I'm not, do you want my opinion on this?
Not on the article, just if whether you see anything in there that would, like I said, violate what we.
Yeah.
Well, right now, the town administrator does the discipline.
No.
Town administrator has the authority to, to do the discipline.
If, if this were passed, would it, would it need a special act of the legislature to change the town administrator by law?
It may, because it came from a special.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a question for council, I guess.
All right, well, Mr. Valvin. So on your, if it's a union contract that comes forward, it comes to us anyways, and three members can make that determination. All right, what could be on this is we need a super majority, so you at least need four people to agree upon it. So that could be added to it too, to make a super majority where it's four instead of just the three. But I would hate to turn around and find out that the board of selectmen should have control, all right, in case something goes bad. All right, so we can protect the town.
Well, as I said, we, we have the right as the town administrator's bosses, so to speak, to discipline the town administrator if they do something that we think is not right. And that says it should be, but we, I don't believe we have the right, nor should we, to tell the town administrator how to conduct the daily affairs of town.
But see, and that's what town council said, it says that the board of selectmen cannot tell, all right, the town administrator to discipline somebody. And if he chooses not to discipline them, even though it violates our policies and procedures, okay, clearly, all right, no questions asked, that it violated it, then it looks like there's an appearance of conflict. All right? And why should one person be treated differently than another? Okay?
Well, you know, nothing's perfect, but there is a reason why town meeting voted for a strong town administrator in the beginning. There's a long history to, to this, Mr. Valvin.
I, I have a real concern that we bring politics back into, back into this by, by passing this, I, I really do. Does anyone else have anything on this?
I guess I'm, I see merit to it in that if a town administrator were potentially to, you know, look like excessively issue a discipline or lack to discipline something, that could be an issue if it ends up coming back and causing harm to the town because of someone's action or inaction. So I see merit or where something could be a problem that should be addressed somehow. You know, if, if the town administrator does or doesn't do something, it's tough for us to have to sit back and not do anything about it. But I'm not sure this by law is the right place to do that.
I, I agree, because my, my fear is you're taking some of their job responsibility away, that, that was voted on a town meeting.
Yeah.
I agree that there's got to be some oversee, is that the right word, over?
Oversight.
Oversight, thank you. And again, that's why I said I'm conflicted with this, to be honest with you. Yeah.
Okay. Anyone have anything else? Is there a motion to put this on the town meeting warrant? Someone like to make a motion? Just want to let you know, I, I'm not going to make a motion on my own thing, so. Okay. It can die.
Question if the, there's a placeholder in there now? If we don't vote on this now, so if we don't approve or deny it?
If we don't vote to put it on the warrant, then it won't be on the warrant.
Okay.
Is there a motion to put this on town meeting warrant? All right. We'll move along to the accessory apartment by law.
And, Mr. Chair, before, before we, um, get into this, this is, the accessory dwelling unit should obviously be, come from planning boards. And I know there's a little history here, but on the other hand, it's, I just don't think that's our purview. I think this should be brought to the planning board if, um, if Mr. Valvin's interested in having them look at it. I just don't think it's, it's just not a, our, something we should be, um, putting on the warrant ourselves.
I, I, I agree, I think there's been, there, there have been accessory, uh, dwelling unit bylaws brought forward by the planning board in the past on town meeting.
Absolutely.
But, Mr. Valvin, please. Okay, so this is many years coming, and what I actually did here is I, somebody's got to start, okay? And this is where we have a problem. The planning board just had a, some of the come in, that they had a accessory apartment, okay? And now they're looking to change it from an accessory apartment to a two-family. And I had sent them a bunch of questions and whatnot that you have, they have to answer. And they're in that process right now, okay? What this does, the way I presented this here, and I presented it to the chairperson too, is that this language goes closer to the state, what the state wants to do, because when I went to a mass municipal association thing, they talked about this, about changing it, all right? And instead of saying accessory apartments, it's a dwelling unit. That won't change, because dwelling unit is in our bylaws already. All right? I also turn around and it gets rid of the fifty-five or older, okay? That's big, because right now, the way our taxes are now is so high, some people can't afford to live in their house by themselves, and having an accessory dwelling unit, all right, instead of going to a two-family, all right, process, this is a different process, okay? And I understand your point about bringing this up to the planning board, but somebody has to start it, the talks. All right, someone's got to start this.
Well, we already have an accessory apartment by law.
And it's very restrictive.
Well, that's what town meeting adopted.
So would you rather have people go before them to planning board and ask for a two-family?
I'm, I'm not going to get into that argument, Bob.
Well, that's, that's, that's really.
I'm not going to argue this with you. What I'm suggesting is we already have one, and people don't like it, they go to zoning board.
Here's, here's the thing, and please, someone, correct me if I'm wrong. But when this comes from the planning board, there's a public hearing.
That's right.
Correct?
Right.
That doesn't happen when it comes from the select board.
That's correct.
That's why I'd like to see the planning board, and if you have something, listen, many of these things I don't disagree with. But I'd like to see it come from the planning board and go through the public hearing process, and it doesn't happen if we bring it forward. No, that's not true, okay? If we turn around and say whether it's the fence or this one here, okay, it's going to come from us, and it's going to go to planning board, because planning board has to have the public hearing process. That's the process that goes in place here. If we say it's okay, we want to put this on the warrant, it's going to go to planning, and planning, because it's a zoning article, has to go through the posting, the public hearings, the discussions of it, all right? That, that's the purpose of this. I understand, I just, if, if they do it, they go through, I mean, they get the building inspectors, I just think it's not, shouldn't come from us. I think it should come from the planning board, I think the building inspector should have input on it, I think it's, I just think that's the process it should cover, not come from the select board, that's, that's my thought.
So I have a question, so Bob, just to follow up on what you just said. So you're saying if we voted to put this on the warrant, it still has to go before the planning board? They still have to have a public hearing?
Correct.
So basically, we're putting a warrant on an article on the warrant that theoretically should come from them?
Yeah, it's kind of like us telling them what to do.
Okay. But it still has to go through the, but it still has to go through the hearing? So what if they don't, if we put this on and they don't do the hearing in a timely manner? This doesn't get on there?
If they don't follow what they have to do before town meeting, to have the public, the notice and the public hearing, then it can't be on because it didn't follow the process to get on town meeting, all right? So that's the process, okay? And if I get ten people to sign a petition article, all right, it's still got to go through that process. So whether it's the petition article process, all right, ten people get it, it's still got to have a public hearing through the planning board. So basically, what we're doing here is that we say, here you go, take a look at this, discuss it, all right? They can make changes to it too during that process.
I'm not, Mr. Fennessey, could you help us out here? I'm not sure a petition article, if it's a zoning article, does that have to go through the planning board?
Doesn't have to, but they would, I, I assume they would look at it.
But they, they don't have to. I, I just, we just really don't.
It may lead to a hearing.
But they could choose not to.
Right.
And the same, by the same token, they could choose not to look at this, um, as, as a fellow elected board. I mean, I, I just have an issue too, trying to tell another board what, how they should do their zoning.
So do we have, so we have a by law in place now, you said that's very restrictive.
Yes.
For accessory, so shouldn't that, shouldn't this be more of, let's review that by law and make that change? Is this a complete, this is a completely different?
No, there's a few changes in it.
Okay.
All right, for it.
So the things that are in, in, in bold, that's the changes?
The bolds are the changes, yes.
Okay, I saw, I misunderstood, sorry.
Okay. So no matter what, if it's a zoning article, whether it's a petition article, all right, because I've done this already, okay? It still has to go through the public hearing process because it's a zoning article. There's no questions asked, it's got to go through that.
Well, Mr. Fennessey just said they could choose not to do that.
No, they still have to have a public hearing, that's the law.
It's not the law until, well, until it's approved.
They can't change it. That's the difference, they can't change what's in the wording of a petition article. The petition article is a petition article. They can have the public hearing, people can discuss it and everything, but they can't change the wording. With us going forward with this, they can turn around and change the wording, because it's coming from another board.
And once again, I, I really don't like telling another board, um, what they should, what they should have on the town meeting warrant.
Well, we're the ones that picked the warrant. The board of selectmen, we create the warrant.
They're the ones that do zoning. And this is a zoning article.
But any people in the town can turn around and request them to turn around and look at it. If they choose not to look at it, all right, then they do a disservice to the town, in my opinion.
That's your opinion, that's right.
In, in my opinion, but my opinion is what I put forth here is a huge compromise, and it turned around, it goes toward what the accessory dwelling units should be language, all right? That it doesn't limit it to fifty-five or older. But again, all, we're not debating the article itself. All we're debating is whether we think the select board should place the, place the article on the town meeting warrant. So whether, the, the gist of the article is, can come, you know, if it gets put in the warrant, then we'll talk about whether we approve the article or not. We just, is, is there any other comment from anybody about whether we should place the article on the town meeting warrant? Hearing not. Is, is there a motion to place this article on town meeting warrant? I'll ask again, is there a motion to place this article on town meeting warrant?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the submission of the following article to be placed on the FY twenty-three annual town meeting warrant. Accessory apartment by law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
All right, so I have a question. So say we approve this, that it goes on the warrant. The next step is to present this to the planning board?
Mr. Fennessey, is that correct?
Yeah.
And then the planning board, so it's going to be on the, can the planning board then vote not to, to take it off? Or they can't because the select board put it on?
We've put it on the warrant.
Oh, it'd be on the warrant.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this will be on the warrant and.
So they would do a recommendation, just like.
Yeah, so we would be basically instructing them to put this on the warrant.
Okay. And then they can vote whether to approve it or not, or not, recommended, sorry. Just like, just like we will as well.
And if they wanted changes, then they can turn around and say, well, we don't like this, we don't like that, but we do like this. It allows them to make changes too during the public hearing process. That was one of the issues I have with, when you have the public hearing process, is you go up there and you say, okay, could you change this, this, and this, and then all of a sudden, all right, they don't care about what is said, and they do whatever they want anyways. So my feeling here is that they look at this, they discuss it, they said, does it have merit or not? Do we want to change some language in here? And they turn around and say, hey, I think we should change this, this, and this. And they come back to us and say, these are the changes we want to see in this, all right, to approve it, okay? And they've had their public hearing, they've had their discussions, gives us an opportunity to change it. Changes get done on town meeting floor all the time.
So, and I'll just, my final comment is, so this is us forcing the planning board to have this article on the warrant. And I'm personally not comfortable doing that to a, an elect, another elected board.
Okay. Any further comment? Okay. All in favor of placing of this article on the town meeting warrant?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm not sure what that vote was. Was it one to four?
One to four.
Yeah.
It's not in the town meeting warrant. Okay, so we have the final two, the final two items, Mr. Belvin, the yard sale bylaw and the burglar alarm bylaw. And I, do I understand from your previous comments that what you really want to do is remove these two?
Just remove them too, from our bylaws.
Okay.
They're not enforced, they're not, nothing's done with them, it just takes up space.
Has everyone had a chance to read those two bylaws?
No.
Okay, so why don't we come back, that should be a nice, simple vote at the next meeting. So why don't we all take the time to read the yard sale bylaw and the burglar alarm bylaw prior to the next select board meeting, and we'll vote on whether to remove the bylaws on it. Everyone, everyone okay with that? All right.
Can I just jump in? This conversation sparked something from the moratorium discussion from earlier, because the way that it is worded right now is to amend Section 3580 of the zoning bylaws, but the intent isn't to change the bylaw at all. It's just to adopt a moratorium, so, and that's how, you know, it's written with other towns too. So do we, or should we, or I, go back and change the motion? Because the purpose is not to change the bylaw, it's just to adopt a temporary moratorium so that this bylaw isn't acted on, but it's not changing it. So does that need, do we need to redo that, so it doesn't trigger, you know, having to have the planning board do this? Because the bylaw is not supposed to change, it's just adopting a moratorium.
Mr. Fantasy, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I just want to make, because this kind of sparked, should we?
Everything's fine the way it is?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay with you, Ms. Bogart?
As long as it's good, like I said, look at that discussion sparks all this stuff.
Review this.
So, great.
Mr. Belvin, I just want to make sure, we moved around a little bit here. Did we miss any of your items?
No, we're all set.
Okay.
The last one is the Carver Marion Wareham Regional Refuge District. That's right. All right. Do you want me to give you a heads up on this one?
Yeah, just give us a quick...
And then, all right, so this one, I'll try to go from the first page all the way down. Made my notes, all right? As you see in the name, it still has Marion. Marion is still on the name, in name only. They have liability to the South Carver landfill, so that's why we have to keep their name on it. The next one is financials, I just want to let you know, right now, we're at 1.2 million.
Mr. Belvin, I'm sorry, can I just, the article says Carver Marion Regional Refuge Disposal District. Should it say Carver Marion Wareham?
Wareham, yeah.
Okay, so we need to amend that, to add Wareham in there.
Yeah.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
We've split up how our money is spent. We have post-employment benefits, where we segregated money out of that. That's 90,000. Our operating budget is at 100 and... Operating is 1. something, no, 112,000, looks like, and then payroll is like 18. So we have plenty of money in there for us. The next section under A is the composition. There's three members from Carver, three from Wareham. The next one, section under membership, it's a three-year term for each one of those members. If somebody has a vacancy, the town has 30 days, we have to get somebody in that position. The next one is anyone who wants to resign, they can resign. They just have to notify the Board of Selectmen and the Town Clerk. The organization of us, we still have a chair, a secretary, and a treasurer. Powers and duties, this is standard language for a district. That gives us the powers to do what we have to do, under general laws. The quorum, because there's only six members, four of them is a quorum. So it's very important that the town keep three members in there at all times. And we don't go through that. Next one is property. The town has, the district has property on Route 28, all right? And our property also includes the license for the transfer facility, which we allow Wareham to manage it. And we have a separate contract for them, that just got signed last year, last month, all right? The next part is a portments, and, I said that wrong, but in payments of cost. This allows the district to send a bill to Carver or Wareham to pay bills. As you see, we have enough money right now to cover us, so we don't need to use this section. But if the district ever loses our money, the district has the right to send a bill to Carver to pay all of our bills. All right, so, and that's the way it's broken up. Next one is our budget, that we create a budget, and we provide it to the town.
One quick question, the cost, what's the percent Carver versus Wareham?
I'll get to that.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to jump ahead.
All right. For our budgets, our final operating and maintenance budget, it's very, we have very little now, because we don't run the transfer station. We don't have much money coming into us, very, very little, if anything. It's usually rebates or something like that, that comes into us. But we don't, the only thing we pay is rent, $200 a month for rent. And then office supplies, we have our audit that we have to do, either yearly or every two years. We've already had two audits done, which have come out really good. And what else? Our, how, what do you call it? Bookkeeper, she's under ours, and we have a couple of people that are in the retirement. So like I said, we don't have a lot. We have our legal funds that we have to do, and we have to pay insurances. The biggest thing is insurances, but that's pass-through money that goes from Cavanta to us, and then it's paid off. So and that covers us until the end of this 25 to 30-year process. Stabilization account, we've actually taken money out, made a stabilization account. And this tells us that we will turn around and put in 150,000, okay? We already did that, so we're ahead of the game on that anyways. Long-term financial planning, this is something that I've talked to Tom O'Brien, he's come to us, and we have to look at our financial planning of how we can use our money to make money, all right? By investing it in some way, shape, or form, and this gives us that opportunity to do that. And it allows us to look at our audit and make sure that the money's protected. That's my big thing with this whole thing, is protect the money. We can't let it get stolen like it was before. That's why it's really important, we have three members all the time. Amendments, this is a big difference, and I really want to stress this. The way it is now, the existing agreement is, any changes that we're going to do, we have to go to town meeting. And we have to ask them for those changes, ask them for those changes. This one changes it from going to town meeting, instead going right to the Board of Selectmen and allowing the changes being made in here. And this is where it'll come important, when you talk about what's the breakdown of money. The way the breakdown of money goes is, it's called equalized tax valuation. So basically, you look at how much, how many employees, how many residents you have, how much taxes are brought in, and you calculate it out, and it'll come out, say, all right, Wareham does 50 million, and Carver does 20 million. And they value it out that way for it, something like that. Not a finance person, so sometimes it goes over my head, but that was basically what goes on. If, say, Carver starts developing a little more in this town, and Wareham does less, then Carver needs to get more money. So hopefully, the equalized valuation will account for that, but sometimes it won't. I think right now, it's at 75-25, all right? But if we wanted to change it to 65-35, if we had to go to town meeting to do that, it's like, okay, Wareham may say yes, and, or Wareham say no, and Carver says yes, and then we can't pass it no matter what. That's where this language, instead of going to town meeting, it goes to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen can kind of hash it out and say, hey, we get a representative from Carver, a representative from Wareham Board of Selectmen, and you guys talk about it and say, hey, is this okay, is this not, or whatnot? And this is the reason why, and we go back to the board and say, well, this is what we've kind of negotiated out. It leaves it out of the district's hands, all right? Where we come to you and say, okay, we need to change it. You have to understand, it's 3-3. And from what I've been told, is equalized valuation is probably the best option right now, than to go to a percentage, because like I said, what happens if Carver does a lot worse, and we only get 10%, and they get 90% of the money that's left over? And to be honest, there's probably not going to be any money left over at the end of this. All right, after 25, 30 years, we won't even be here, okay? But our kids and our grandkids are going to be here, and they may have to pay more money out. We don't want that. I mean, we want to make sure we're prepared, so that language, that's a tough one. All right, and I wrote, it's a big difference, getting it approved here or getting it approved at town meeting. Okay. Next one, incurring debt, this is another one. This allows the district, and this was in the prior one before that, and the prior one before that, is that the district can get debt. So if we turn around and we run out of money, and we say, okay, well, we need a bond, all right, let's go get a bond, get some cash to pay this off. Well, we can't just do that. We have to go before the Board of Selectmen here, and then request it to be put on town meeting, and town meeting has to approve it. So this one is always in there, from what I've been told, and it is what it is. That's a tough one, and I don't like to incur debt. I think you guys figured that out, that I don't like debt. And, but if the towns don't pay us, then this is the other option. So that's occurring debt. Distribution of cash, that's the equalized tax, equalized tax valuation. Charges against the district. If the town fails to pay, that we said, then we can turn around and go after you, and... Sorry, wrong, that's the other thing. This one is Wareham took $24,000 of equipment. That's on the books, it's in our financials. Every financial that we get, they owe us 24,000, so that, whatever's left over at the end, they'll end up paying that off. So if the district sells the property, which is the next one, because that's the only property we technically have, is the Route 28 facility, and some of the stuff on top of that, they just, I think, put in the other compactor. But it's ours, all right? But they paid $24,000 for vehicles and whatnot, they'll have to pay that back before they take any money, if there's any left. If there's no money left, then they have to pay that 24,000 back. Then selling the property, I just talked about that. And the last one is dissolution, dissolution? I can't say it, all right? We close up shop, that's not going to happen. That's not going to happen to 20, 30 years. The landfill, and that's the big thing, is the landfill. The landfill, it's a lined landfill, one of the first ones in the state was lined, and it's capped over now. We still monitor it. It's paid for by Cavanta to keep it monitored, and if something happens, we have insurance. And it costs us, and each occurrence is $100,000 we got to pay out of them, out of the district, all right? And that's it, and then it goes to town meeting. Both Wareham and Carver have to vote in favor of this, in order for it to go pass. And that's my goal. This is really the last part of our, of the district, to really tie all the loose ends up. This is the last loose end. The prior agreement, it just didn't do what this does, so. I think that's it, so I hope the board will allow it to be on the warrant, and we go forward.
Questions from the board on this?
Thank you for this, this is great. Question to you, if Wareham doesn't approve this, or if their town meeting changes the language at all, they can, okay. Like, I mean, someone at town meeting can get up and change it, right? We can't tell someone at town meeting, you can't change that.
No, no, this, this is the way it's written here.
Right.
You cannot change this agreement, all right? You either agree for all of it, or you agree for nothing.
That's the way it'll, so at town meeting, no... Because my concern is, what if we or they changed a word, and we didn't approve the exact same one? What can we do to make sure the exact same one's approved?
That's why we go up and say, this is the agreement, this is what we have. We have to send this into the state, okay, to get it approved, okay? There's no questions asked. They can't change it, we can't change it, all right? If they try to change it, all right? Then it's null and void, because we can't approve this, and they approve something different. It's an all or nothing.
I understand it as that, but do they, and when are they set to approve it?
They're doing the same thing that we're doing right now, is going through their process. They have a hold on their warrant, so this will be on their warrant too. So, and I think their town meeting's like a day after ours.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, before or after.
Sure.
So, yeah.
Obviously, this agreement has to be approved by both towns, or it's null and void.
Right, it has to be approved by both towns. And if it doesn't pass, the old agreement stands, which will basically force us back to the drawing board to say, all right? Because the other agreement is, to be honest, it's 1974, '73. So this is picking up for 1973, and then 1995, when they did another restated one. But it's not up to date.
Questions from the board? All right. Is there a motion to put this on the town meeting warrant?
Okay, I move to approve the submission of the following article to be placed on the FY23 annual town meeting warrant to accept the amended and restated agreement of the Carver Marion Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District.
I'll second that. Motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we are back to the adoption of the layout of Montello Street portion. Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything to add?
No, I think we already talked about this three hours ago.
Yep.
I move to approve the submission of the following article to be placed on the FY23 annual town meeting warrant to lay out of Montello Street portion as a public way from Main Street, Route 58, to an intersection with an accepted portion of Montello Street, all as shown on plan entitled, "Plan of Road in the Town of Carver, Massachusetts, Plymouth County, Showing Location of Easements for the Purpose of Reconstructing Montello Street at Main Street for the Town of Carver, dated January 11, 2022, Prepared by VHB, and On File with the Town Clerk."
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. Let's take a five-minute break. We are back in session. The next item up on our agenda is the Town Administrator Update. Mr. Fantasy?
Okay, so I did an update. I talked to all department heads and asked for some input from them, and I'll kind of go through some of the highlights of each one, so. So first, it came up about the North Carver Water District, and to give an update on that, there were several issues of no water or low water pressure over the past month or two. So I met with Kevin Tracy, and we discussed all those problems, and and they ranged from a problem with software to human error, leaving on a spigot that ran the water down and so forth. But we discussed how they could set up a notification process for the users so that they know when there's an issue, and how long it's going to take to get it back on. They did collect like all the email addresses of those people, the users. They, there is a process that he tells me that they can call a town hall during town hall hours, if there's an issue, and talk to the operations and maintenance people. hall hours, if there's an issue, and talk to the operations and maintenance people. And they can get in touch with the software company or the company that services the district. Short of that, they, we talked about perhaps putting out something with the billing, that they have a, so they have something they can stick on their wall and see, oh, this is what I got to do when, when something happens. It's, it's not, not a great situation. The issues somewhat revolve around one employee who's not available right now, who lived locally, and, and the other ones come from Littleton, Massachusetts, so when there is an issue, they have to come down from Littleton. So that employee's soon to come back and that'll hopefully resolve some of those issues. But it's, you know, it's a, it's a commission, you know, it's their own, bless you. It's their own commission, it doesn't come under the Board of Selectmen, as you know, so.
Can I ask a question? The phone number, who could they contact outside of town hall hours?
So I'll, I'm sorry, I should have said that. So the other part of that process is that they call a police station and they can get in touch with Dave or somebody who can then make those calls and, and get it, and that's how it's working right now.
Okay.
Okay?
So I understand it's a separate board and I, just for informational purposes, so if, if water goes out Sunday at two o'clock in the afternoon, town hall's closed, is, is there somewhere right now that someone can call to say, hey, my water's out? Do we know when I might get it back?
So they notify the users to say, call the police department. The police department will call Dave or, or the company to get somebody down there to get the water back.
Even on a Sunday?
Okay.
Yep, off hours.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Belvin?
So the other aspect of that is now you inundate the nine-one-one operator for the next half an hour, forty-five minutes of getting calls, I have no water.
Yeah.
This is why they're trying to address the issue.
Yeah, so they're, they're working on the, the process of a better process. I didn't get a lot of answers to that, but, but they say they are working on it, so.
I think I had put this out here before, but I think if we get the phone numbers of all the users, all right, and have a phone blast for them to send it out, say, we do know there's a problem with the water, we're working on it, should be within this period of time, okay? But the other aspect of that is that we have businesses that when the water goes out, all right, they're out of business, they're not making money, and when they come back online, they have to turn around and spend hundreds upon hundreds of dollars, all right? And it's not fair for them. So, and I understand it's a separate board, but we, we have to look at this and say, all right, if they need help and we can help them in some way, shape, or form, then maybe we should, maybe...
So maybe we invite them into the Board of Selectmen's meeting and have a joint meeting and see what...
Yeah, Mr. Chair, could I just ask, in the interest of time, for us to let the assistant, the interim town administrator go through these for us?
Sure.
Thank you.
We can get together later on that.
Yeah.
Second, I just want to mention that the town meeting warrant is being put together. It's in its early draft stages. Hopefully, within the next several weeks, we have a, a full draft that, you know, as you go through approving these warrant articles, they'll be put in, in a, in a sequential order, so. So that's coming together. Capital outlay requests, we had the capital outlay committee met with department heads who submitted capital requests on January thirteenth and the twenty-seventh. The Finance Director and the Town Administrator presented a balanced bu, a budget that was able to recommend most capital request items. Three requests, a library HVAC, the townwide radio, public safety system, and the town hall exterior siding and, and trim replacement is going to be bundled together and bonded over ten to fifteen years. The process was made smooth, I think, much by the, the department heads themselves, who sometimes gave up their own requests to fund something else that would be better for the town, which I, I, you don't see that anywhere for these, this cooperation. It was, it was great, great for me to see that happen, so.
I think that's great to hear, that's great for the public to hear, so thank you for mentioning that.
Absolutely.
I just want to interrupt real quick. I want to thank you and Sue Okwen for working diligently on that. I'm on the capital outlay, I'm the select board representative for that, and most of us, it was our first time and everything, I thought, went smooth. You guys worked well together.
Yeah.
And then with, like you said, the chiefs all, everybody prioritized, everyone understood what was going on, but, but you guys did a great job. Just want to make sure the board knew that you and Sue did a great job with that.
Appreciate that. Yeah, so after the first meeting, we, I sent out a memo to the board members, to the, I'm sorry, to the department heads, asking them to prioritize each one of their requests. So when we made cuts, you know, we wouldn't be cutting something that they, was critical to them. So, so they were great, the department, so. The Finance Director, Sue Okwen and I have been meeting weekly with the school superintendent and their Finance Director to peer down and close in on a balanced budget. The process will continue until we can present a sustainable balanced budget to the select board. So, and that may lead to a joint meeting, either with them or, and with the Finance Committee, to get together on the budget when we're at that point, but we're getting there, we're, we're getting it down. Conservation Agent reports that the Conservation Committee has placed an order of conditions on Jellystone Park, which used to be named Shady Acres Campground. They're proposing an elite type of campground with a water park, but the water park will only open to the guests and not to the outside. Okay, we're at the police. The police reports that the body-worn cameras have been ordered. Also, the chief, the chief receives a grant from Maya for the installation of anti-theft devices to, to prevent thefts of a cruiser during emergency response. And believe it or not, that's happened in two surrounding towns, where they're out at a response and somebody jumps in the cruiser and takes off.
Oh, my God.
So, on the fire side, the, the chief has hired five additional call firefighters, and the recruit training is actually beginning this week on, on February fifth. He makes note of a house fire at Two Coles Mill Road a few weeks ago, and what makes this notable is that forty-one Carver firefighters showed up to the call. That was amazing. There were no injuries of the occupants or the firefighters in fighting that fire, so. So great job to these guys. EMS, the chief notes that they too have new candidate recruits in the hiring process right now. After their training, they'll join the forces, paramedics or EMTs, depending on their level of training. So back here in town hall, the clerk has been extremely busy doing all the duties incumbent upon that office, including the annual census and dog licensing. Kara mentioned that two weeks ago, they had well over six-hundred-and-fifty dog licenses given out, so they're very busy. The IT, town hall, and EMS Wi-Fi access points are being upgraded to support more devices and a faster Wi-Fi. The library is also undergoing significant network upgrades to connect them to the town's school and fiber network. Under operations and maintenance, the staff under Dave Sedentoff and Jim Woods did a fantastic job weathering the storm, I'm sure you, you're going to talk about that, with a great assist of public safety. They all did fantastic. They also report that there has been a substantial completion of the town hall high efficiency lighting that you can see in our offices and throughout town hall, and this dock room will be done pretty soon too, so. The Board of Health Agent notes that the water main tie-ins have started on Plymouth Street, Heinz Ave, and Captain Perkins Drive, and it affects twenty-one homes. Also, last week, you may know that the Board of Health had put a mask recommendation in town hall to kind of stem the tide that, from the spike during the Christmas time, and it seems to be going down now, so. Finally, the staff in the Town Administrator's office, Elaine, Shelby, and Nancy, along with each member of the Board of Select, Select Board here, have been very generous with your time in getting me up to speed and helping me get indoctrinated into Carver, and I appreciate that. I want to thank you, I want to thank you, Elaine, and, and Shelby and Nancy too, so. And that, that's it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Belvin?
Just a one thing on the EMS. Is there any changes to how they, their quote volunteering policy for employees there?
Yeah, yeah, we had talked about that. I'll talk to you about that later.
Okay.
Because you brought that up to me. But that's being worked on, a change in, in policy and how we're doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Yuen, did you have something?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Minutes licensed topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting, there are none. Our next meeting is going to be February fif, February fifteenth, and just remember that we're adding a meeting on February twenty-second. I think we, we have a lot in front of us for town meeting, so we're going to need that additional meeting. Approval of the minutes of January eighteenth. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion we approve, as written.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Abstain, abstain, I wasn't there.
And abstain, I wasn't there as well.
Correct. So it is three, three zero two. Okay, approval of the executive session minutes of January eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, and not for release. Is there a motion?
I made a couple of minor amendments, I hope everyone has seen those.
I just read them between our meetings, but when did you do?
Like, ear, earlier today.
Is it reflected in the, okay?
Yeah, she, Elaine changed them. All right. I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of January eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, and not for release.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? It is unanimous. Let's see, request for bike race, Cape Cod getaway, MS bike ri, bike ride, June twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
I'll make a motion we approve.
All right.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor? Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, I just, I, I'm happy that the chiefs both gave their approval for this, so I'm happy with that and, good luck.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? It is unanimous. We have a request from the Friends of Council on Aging to reschedule their request for their one-day special license, originally approved on twelve twenty-one twenty-one, scheduled for two five twenty-two, and they'd like it, we'd like to reschedule it for five fourteen twenty-two. I recused myself from this item originally, and I'd like to do that again, so Ms. Yuen, if you have a second.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
Make a motion to approve the rescheduling request for the one-day special license originally approved on twelve twenty-one twenty-one, scheduled for two five twenty-two to five fourteen twenty-two by the Friends of Council on Aging.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion? Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, I'd like to get a copy of the insurance policy they have for running this process. I just want to state that I don't feel that alcohol should be in any town building during working hours or off working hours, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? It's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes three to one.
Thank you, Ms. Yuen.
Sure.
Uh, let's see, okay. Select Board Notes. Ms. Bogart?
No.
Mr. Belvin?
Uh, sure. I'd like to thank all the town emergency services that were out there for this.
I'm sorry, excuse me, are we on board notes? Because aren't any...
Yeah, well, just on select board notes.
Okay, yeah. I'll pass to the other ones.
Actually, they're out, so they're out, they're select board notes, so. It's a little bit late here. Select, Select Board Community Announcements.
There we go.
I think, I think I'll let Bob say what I'm thinking in my head. Go, go for it, Bob.
I'd like to thank all of our town services, our emergency services, for a job well done during the storm. We had all three fire stations manned, we had plenty of police officers on duty and our DPW and all of our support staff doing the plowing in this town. I think they did an outstanding job with a lot of snow in a relatively short period of time, so I just want to say thank you to all of them and all of our management personnel. Thank you. The next one is, I want to welcome our new town interim planner, Tom Bott, just met him tonight. So, I want to say thank you and welcome aboard. And for all of our town management employees, thank you for all your dedication in helping out with the CARES Act and the Opera. Without you guys, we wouldn't get this money, so we may be receiving the check, but you guys are doing all the work. So I want to say thank you very much.
That's enough. All right?
Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman?
Um, I think you said that very eloquently, to thank everybody, all the emergency service, police, fire, everybody, the plow workers. I know it was a long day for everybody, but we appreciate it, and like I even said in our Facebook post, the roads were great. I mean, all the main roads, like I said, you could tell when you got to the Carver line, that it was down to the pavement. So I know some neighborhoods weren't done as, as well, but, but again, all the main roads are passable, which, which is great. And also, I just want to make a quick note to everyone to keep Shane McColligan in their thoughts and prayers as well.
Thank you. Ms. Yuen?
Yes, I, I'll just keep mine brief, so I know a couple of people in a couple of other towns around here who were telling me how great our DPW is. They said it was very evident when you crossed the town line, but I refuse to name the town. And I, I, I agree, I'm very concerned for young Shane, wish him, him well.
And I, I won't extend the meeting too far by adding too much onto this, I just want to also thank all our public safety departments, all our chiefs, EM, you know, Emergency Management Director, Tom Walsh, I think they all, all our departments did a wonderful job, but I think the key is they really work wonderfully together, and I think as Mr. Fantasy mentioned earlier in the meeting, you don't see that in every town, but you see it in our town, and that's, I think that's a tribute to, to all of them. I also would ask everyone to keep Shane in their thoughts, and I also just want to give a quick thank you to, to a lot of the Eversource workers, because we didn't lose, I mean, some portions of the town lost power for a little, a little while, but it wasn't like it was in some past storms. And what I noticed when I was watching and trying to monitor and, and going back and forth with, with Tom Walsh about where power was out, and a lot of it came back during the middle of the storm, and that's a, that's a tribute. I mean, for people to be out there in the middle of a snowstorm bringing power back, that's, that's extraordinary, I think, so, so thank you to them. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? It is unanimous. I had to be like, it might be.